Welcome to the November seventeenth meeting of the Placer County Planning Commission. Would you please join me in a flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Sue.
Good morning. Yes. Vice Chair Nader.
Here.
Commissioner Moss.
Here.
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Severson.
Here.
And Commissioner Arcuri.
Here.
And Chairman Rukucci.
Here.
Thank you.
Do we have any report from the planner today?
Good morning Chairman and members of the commission. First off, I just want to publicly introduce Sue Colbert, who is filling in for our planning commission clerk, who is out sick today. So I know you've had an informal introduction, but we appreciate her being here today. I don't know why we're sitting so high on this side today.
I was going to say, I'm going to get a moat lead here.
My comfort level is usually at ground level, but anyway, so. So the only thing I want to talk about real quick are upcoming planning commission meetings. As you know, we're going to cancel the December eighth meeting. We're actually moving that meeting to December fifteenth. That's going to be down in Auburn, and that will be the final meeting of the year.
The agenda for that day?
Right now, we have the White Hawk subdivisions down in Granite Bay. They're tentatively scheduled. We have a Morgan Creek subdivision. I think there's also an extension of time on that agenda. So all West Placer projects.
Any questions of EJ?
What was the final date that you were going to have?
December fifteenth. It's the Thursday.
It's just one week up from our normal meeting day.
Oh, and we're not going to have one the eighth?
Right.
Correct.
That's great, because I have CTC on that same day.
See, we did that for you, Larry.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
No.
That's not a public comment item. Time set aside at every meeting that for members of the public to comment on. Any item is not on the agenda. Time limit is three minutes, and we can't make a decision on this, so just for public comment. Any public comment? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. And we do have no consent agenda items, but there was a note here, and I think EJ already covered it, but December meeting will be December fifteenth. ... December meeting will be December fifteen. And our first timed item, ten oh five, and I think we're there. And our first timed item, ten oh five, and I think we're there. North Star Mountain Master Plan, request for continuance, EA. North Star Mountain Master Plan, request for continuance, EA.
Yes, Alan Bruch. Yes, Alan Bruch. I'm the project planner for the North Star Master Plan project. I'm the project planner for the North Star Master Plan project. Staff is requesting a continuance of this particular item to a future Tahoe Planning Staff is requesting a continuance of this particular item to a future Tahoe Planning Commission meeting. Commission meeting. Specifically, we need a little bit more time on the errata sheet. Specifically, we need a little bit more time on the errata sheet. This, the environmental document was a few years old, and then we're doing errata to This, the environmental document was a few years old, and then we're doing errata to update it, to make sure it refreshes and shows all the current CEQA requirements, as well update it, to make sure it refreshes and shows all the current CEQA requirements, as well as we're working with the applicant on the housing component. as we're working with the applicant on the housing component. We're still addressing some of the conditions, and we want to have something back to you We're still addressing some of the conditions, and we want to have something back to you that you can review and take a look at. that you can review and take a look at. So staff is requesting a continuance. So staff is requesting a continuance. I do have the applicant here as well, Tricia Hall, if there's any questions. I do have the applicant here as well, Tricia Hall, if there's any questions.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Any questions of Alan? Any questions of Alan? Okay, not seeing any. Okay, not seeing any. As the applicant, want to make any comments at this time? As the applicant, want to make any comments at this time? Welcome to. Welcome to. Nice seeing you again. Nice seeing you again.
Hello.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for letting us come and speak.
Thank you for letting us come and speak.
We really just look forward to being heard at the next hearing.
We really just look forward to being heard at the next hearing.
I believe Alan's pushing for a Tahoe hearing in January, so we look forward to that.
I believe Alan's pushing for a Tahoe hearing in January, so we look forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on then to the next item is a timed item, but since it's at... Okay, we'll move on then to the next item is a timed item, but since it's at...
We'll need you to take... We'll need you to take...
You need a motion? You need a motion?
Yes. Yes.
Oh, take a motion on it. Oh, take a motion on it. I'm sorry, you're right. I'm sorry, you're right. There a motion to con... Is there a motion to con... Well, any more, any additional public comment? Well, any more, any additional public comment? If not, is there a motion to continue this item? If not, is there a motion to continue this item?
Oh, move, we continue to, I guess, a January meeting? Oh, move, we continue to, I guess, a January meeting? Can we say that? Can we say that? Or do we have to... Or do we have to...
That would suggest just continue to an open date. That would suggest just continue to an open date. We haven't set next year's calendar. We haven't set next year's calendar.
Second? Open date then, okay.
Moved in second, and roll call? Moved in second, and roll call?
Jeff was the second, thank you. Jeff was the second, thank you. Okay, so Mr. Arcucci. Okay, so Mr. Arcucci. Commissioner Arcucci. Commissioner Arcucci. I'm sorry, I'm combining two names. I'm sorry, I'm combining two names. Okay. Okay.
You got the country right. You got the country right. Yes. Yes.
And Mr. Severson. And Mr. Severson.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Gray. Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Moss. Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson is absent. Mr. Johnson is absent. Mr. Nader. Mr. Nader.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Mr. Rukucci. And Mr. Rukucci.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, the next item is a timed item for ten thirty, but since we're not there yet, Okay, the next item is a timed item for ten thirty, but since we're not there yet, we're going to have a short adjournment until ten thirty. we're going to have a short adjournment until ten thirty. But in the meantime, if any of you would like to speak at the next meeting on the item, But in the meantime, if any of you would like to speak at the next meeting on the item, which is the Tahoe Area Basin Plan or the Lodge, Tahoe City Lodge, you could sign up which is the Tahoe Area Basin Plan or the Lodge, Tahoe City Lodge, you could sign up over here during the break at that table there. over here during the break at that table there. So thank you, so we'll reconvene at ten thirty. So thank you, so we'll reconvene at ten thirty.
...
Staff, Crystal.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Oh, I don't know if this is...
I don't think it's on. I didn't hear you anyway.
Is it on?
There it goes.
Good morning. Uh-oh, wrong. Oops, there we go. Good morning Commissioners. I'm Crystal Jacobson with Placer County Planning Services Division, and pleased to be here today to present to you the Tahoe Basin Area Plan and the Tahoe City Lodge project for your consideration. With me today is Steve Buellna, the planner in the Tahoe office, who has been leading the Tahoe City Lodge project. Adam Lewandowski from Ascent Environmental will be talking about the environmental document today. Samir Tuma, the project applicant for the Tahoe City Lodge project, is also here today and would like to present a very small presentation to your commission. And then we also have Lucia Maloney and Tiffany Good from TRPA here today to answer any questions that might come up related to TRPA. So they're right here in the front.
Will they be making a presentation?
No, they won't. They're just, I just wanted to point out in case you have any questions.
I'm just writing down everything in order here. I just wanted to kind of keep it straight.
Okay.
Thank you.
So it's important to note that this presentation is both on the Tahoe Basin Area Plan and the Tahoe City Lodge project. The EIR, EIS, did analyze both of those projects. They, it analyzed the area plan at the program level and analyzed the... level and analyzed the Tahoe City Lodge at the project level. I do want to point out that the analysis for the EIR and all project review of the Tahoe City Lodge was funded by the applicant, so that is a separate project that has been undergoing project review here at the county. And so, again, a separate project request and independent action from the area plan. The Tahoe City Lodge project is proposing to utilize the development standards contained within the area plan, which is why it's being analyzed together. So it's really a way to demonstrate how the TRPA regional plan and the area plan will realize environmental redevelopment. So what we'll do today is provide a presentation on both, the area plan and the Tahoe City Lodge, together. I would recommend that you take public comment combined, so a collective public comment on both. But then at the end, we would ask that you deliberate and take separate actions on both projects. So with that, how this will unfold, I'll provide the presentation on the area plan. I will turn it over to Steve Buellna to talk about the Tahoe City Lodge project. And then Adam Lewandowski will speak to the environmental document, turn it back over to me to provide you with a recommendation, and then we will ask your commission to consider a presentation from Sameer Tuma as well. So this is an illustration of the Tahoe Plan, Tahoe Area Plan Boundary. It does include all portions of the Placer County, all portions of Placer County and the Tahoe Basin area. So the area plan update is an update of all community plans, there's a couple general plans as well, and all regulatory provisions in the Tahoe Basin. So it would be superseding and replacing all of those plans. So what we've done is consolidated all those into one area plan document. To give you a little bit of background, in 2012, TRPA updated their regional plan. Directly following that, we embarked upon an update to our community plans up here in the basin. We formed four area plan teams, otherwise known as citizen advisory groups, and they helped to inform the plans. We had a very robust public outreach process, including these folks in the process. We also prepared town center revision plans for the town centers of Tahoe City and Kings Beach. I will point out that those town centers are defined through the TRPA regional plan. So those, the communities of Tahoe City and Kings Beach are considered town centers where we'd like to see the concentrated redevelopment efforts within those town center boundaries. So those town center revision plans also informed the area plan that you see here today before you. I will point out that in July of 2014, we did release a notice of preparation for the environmental document. We also had an area plan document out at that time. It was met with a lot of concern from stakeholders and TRPA governing board in that it was a little too big in scope. And so what we did at that time, it was, basically, we were told it was not on a path towards adoption. And so at that time, what we did is sort of regrouped, took a different approach, retooled the area plan, and then spent the next year preparing the new plan that you see before you today. So in July 2015, we released a second notice of preparation for the environmental document, and then began preparing it over the course of the next year. In June 2016, we released the draft environmental document and a draft plan that was out for 60 days. We did receive significant comment on that. We were before your commission to receive oral comment on that plan and the environmental document. Received about 111 comment letters totaling about 450 individual comments that had to be responded to. So it's been a big effort to get through that since that ended. That period ended on August 15th. So then, the area plan that is before you today is the November 4th that was released just a couple weeks ago, or a week ago, I think I'm losing track of where I'm at on time. But, so the November 4th release is what we call the final draft area plan. And so I'm going to talk about the changes that we made in response to comments. So I'm going to, real quick here, this is, in terms of the area plan organization, what's before you is an area plan policy document containing these chapters. It also includes an implementation plan. And then there's also what we call a set of implementation regulations. This is really where you see the development standards, the zoning, design guidelines, and really all those sort of regulatory provisions that will regulate lands in the Tahoe Basin. So the area plan contains a few programs. First, and I think this is really important, it's a key objective of the area plan, is to implement the direction of the regional plan. So you're going to see, the regional plan allows for some regional, or, excuse me, redevelopment incentives in the town centers. Those include increases in height, density, and land coverage. So the standards that you see in the area plan is consistent with what's allowed in the regional plan. So they kind of set the parameters in terms of how high you can go, how dense you can go, and so that's what's being carried forward in the area plan. We also have some area-wide amendments, which I'm going to speak to a little bit more in detail here in a minute. Area plan substitute standards, these would be the standards that are not included in the regional plan today, and so we're proposing some changes to the regional plan. Again, I'll speak to that in a minute, too. And then we also include mixed use. So the zoning has changed where we have the commercial nodes throughout the basin area. Those are changing to mixed use. And that's really consistent with the, sort of, the vision of the regional plan. So for the area-wide amendments, these are really encouraged and required by the regional plan, and they're also very much reflective of the area plan team input that we heard over the years. This would allow for residential uses in the commercial areas, that's why we have the mixed use, so you can kind of live and work in these commercial nodes throughout the basin area. It includes updated parking ordinances. We actually did prepare a parking study looking at ways that we could make some modifications to our parking standards to really kind of spur environmental redevelopment here, particularly in our town centers. You're going to see some relaxed parking standards, just a way to address the constrained lots that we have in Tahoe City and Kings Beach. It also includes mixed-use site and building design standards that are very tight so that they, we can ensure what the community character is going to look like in our towns. And then also, there's a provision for dark-skylighting. So the area plan substitute standards, this is really kind of the bulk of the change, so to speak, because these would be requested changes to the TRPA code. So the first is limited conversion of commercial floor area to tourist accommodation units. This is a pilot program for onsite conversions and county CFA. So we would be expanding upon the TRPA land use conversion programs with a limited, this would be a limited pilot program. The conversion rate would be one tourist accommodation unit to 450 square feet of CFA. That's consistent with TRPA's conversion rate that has been developed for their bonus unit pool. Excuse me. And then we had initially capped this at no more than 400 additional TAUs that would be established in Placer County through this program. However, I will point out that in response to some comments that we had received of recent, we have actually modified that. And so I'll speak to that a little bit more later, but that has been reduced from 400 to 200. The sites must have BMP certificates and must also have sidewalk access. So the next provision that you'll see here is non-contiguous project sites in town centers. This is really to address land use, sort of, assembly challenges that we have here in the town centers. This would be limited to town centers and mixed-use zoning. And so this would allow you to, your project site would be non-contiguous, so you could have, per haps, you could have one parcel at one end of town and another parcel at the other end of the town, and it's all included as one project. Under today's code, you can't do that. So we're proposing this change. We've also revised the level of service standard in the transportation chapter to allow for a Level of Service F in the town centers of Tahoe City and Kings Beach. And this is really, the reason for this is we do have congested problems in the town centers. And so what we focused on, what the area plan is focusing on, is a reduction of vehicle miles traveled. So we're really trying to focus on mobility strategies to help reduce, and transit, expanding and enhancing transit, and trying to focus on reducing VMT and taking the focus away from LOS. We do have mitigation that addresses LOS, but really, the focus here is on reducing VMT. We also have a program for secondary dwelling units on parcels less than an acre. Under today's code, this is not allowed. And so we're proposing that folks that have parcels less than an acre can now construct a secondary unit. This is really to address housing affordability. It would require, and I'll point out, this, we also made some changes in response to comments. So what we're proposing today is that this would require a deed restriction for affordability. It also prohibits tourist or vacation rental uses or conversion to a tourist accommodation use. And then what it would also do is it would allow folks to access the TRPA bonus unit pool. So it kind of allows folks to access that pool when they're not getting a residential unit allocation. Yeah, so for, if you were, TRPA would require you to get a residential unit allocation for a second unit, so that it's a commodity that you would have to, you would have to get a right to construct a second unit. But if you, because it's, because the units would be affordable, they could apply to get, to actually access TRPA's bonus unit pool, which would allow them to get a unit through that bonus unit instead of a residential allocation. So it gives them a little bit more, they don't have to go out and get a residential allocation, they can actually get one through the TRPA bonus unit pool. TRPA's here and may be able to speak to the actual mechanism and how that works?
Yes, they wouldn't have to buy it for the bonus.
Tiffany Good, TRPA. So the bonus unit pool, I'm not as familiar with bonus units as allocations, but if they were to have to get an allocation, they would have to apply to Placer County and put their name on the list and purchase an allocation, or buy it on the open market. And the bonus unit pool allows for a little bit more flexibility and affordability in attaining those units. They come directly from TRPA's pool, and there is not a charge for that.
The deed restriction for the affordability would only apply to those units that come from your bonus pool and not every secondary dwelling unit?
That's correct, yeah.
Thank you.
The deed restriction is tied directly to the bonus unit. Well, I guess you can use the bonus units because it's deed restricted, affordable.
Thank you.
But they still have to apply for, they still have to apply for it.
Right, yeah. So it's not certain, because you still have to apply, but it just allows a little bit more flexibility for folks. And then, on this point, too, I just want to point out, we were before the TRPA Regional Plan Implementation Committee. This is a committee made up of TRPA governing boards. We were there yesterday with Larry. And one of the concerns that was brought up yesterday had to do with the deed restriction for affordability. And one of the governing board members had requested that we add a provision to the code that, or to the area plan, that would allow for a four-year evaluation cycle so that we can make any necessary adjustments. So if it's not working this way, we can kind of take a look, you know, take a look at it, see how it's been doing over the last four years, and then make any necessary modifications at that time. It's just, you know, and so I'll speak to that a little bit later in my presentation in terms of a recommended action to your commission. So the land use plan, we have what we call sub-districts for zoning. We are proposing to utilize, to bring forward the existing regulatory provisions contained in the plan area statements. So for all areas outside of the town centers, we are bringing forward all existing regulatory provisions, so nothing's changing. What is changing is the format, how those are presented. So they've been included, all the uses are included in a table now for just ease of use. When you're flipping through the area plan, it really helps to kind of navigate. But the provisions remain the same. And then what also has changed is that we don't call them plan area statements anymore. They're called sub-districts. So we're just dropping the number that, you know, we used to have something that would be called 054 Fairway Tract or something like that. That's being dropped, and it's now just simply called Fairway Tract Sub-District. We also have town center plans in, sub-districts in the town center plans as well, and then we have what we call town center core and transition areas. The core areas are just that, they're the core areas of town. The transition areas are really your gateways, they're the areas that you, as you approach the town. And the reason we did this is to apply different regulatory provisions to each of those in terms of the scale and building massing. So when you come into town, you can only go to three stories. As you get further into town, into the core, you could go up to four stories. So it's really just a way to help address community character. We also have one, Kings Beach Town Center Land Use, what we're calling a classification cleanup. This is Exhibit 5-1 in the EIR. And really, this was, just to make sure that the town center boundary was consistent with mapped parcel boundaries and survey data. So there was little, very, very tiny projection errors on the maps, and so we're just simply cleaning that up. And then for all recreation and conservation lands that have been acquired for conservation, what we're doing is proposing that those be zoned as such. So they have been, where they maybe were residential at one time, and then they were acquired for conservation, we're proposing that those now be designated as conservation or recreation. We also have what we call special planning areas, and there are six of them. These are really subsets of the town centers where projects must meet additional environmental standards to make use of town center redevelopment incentives. And so it really requires some future planning of these areas. And in Kings Beach, we've got a couple, actually, one is North State Line, this area here. And so we're, we are carrying forward the existing regulatory provisions on North State Line. However, we've included an overlay district there so that in the future, if they want to come in, they can have a, you know, they can do a special plan to come in to get the TRPA town, that actually is a town center, it's a very small one, but they can come in to propose those incentives. And then the other one is up here, kind of Highway 267 where it comes into State Route 28, and it's really to look at that interchange in terms of wanting increased mobility and some SEZ restoration there. And so we included a special planning overlay there just to address those concerns. And then in Tahoe City, one of them is actually off this map. It's kind of over here, it's called the Truckee River Corridor Special Planning Area. And these are those sites, as you're coming from Alpine Meadows along Highway 89 into Tahoe City, there's some very light industrial uses along the highway there. We are not proposing any change to the zoning. They are actually, those uses are legal non-conforming right now, they don't conform with the zoning. We had initially in 2014 wanted to make zoning changes there, and we were requested to scale back on that. And so what we've done is put an overlay on those sites so that we would address those changes at a later date. And then we have what we call the Tahoe City River District Special Planning Overlay. That's right here. And so the reason for that is really just to focus on supporting the goals of the State Route 89 Fanny Bridge Revitalization Project that has been approved for that area. So it really encourages active recreation, access by bicycle walking and transit. And then we have what we call the Tahoe City Western Gateway. This is kind of right as you come into town here. And that also has a special planning overlay, because we'd like to see some kind of future planning that focuses on riverfront restoration, public access, and really just bicycle and pedestrian improvements there. And then we have one more, and I'm going to talk a little bit more in detail on this one. It's right here, it's the Tahoe City Golf Course. So I actually have a slide to talk about that. Let me go to the map. So this is not just a special planning area, it is also where we are proposing a town center adjustment, so a boundary adjustment, and some land use changes. So that's why I want to kind of talk a little more about this. So right now, the golf course here is zoned recreation, and this red boundary right here is the town center boundary itself. So again, this town center is established through the TRPA regional plan. So what we are proposing is that we remove some areas, this area here and right here, from the town center, and then add this area right here. And what that does is it removes 7.2 acres from the town center, adds 4.2, and so it's a net reduction of about three acres. So the area that it's pulling into the town center here is the clubhouse portion of the golf course. And this is a part of the Tahoe City Lodge project, is some renovations to that clubhouse that you'll hear about a little bit later. What has come out is the fairway, so this is owned by the Tahoe City PUD, and then there's the little county wetland detention basin right here that's also coming out. So public land's coming out. And then the land that's going in, I think it's important to note, too, that that's high land capability. So the remainder of the golf course is not. So this is being proposed as recreation, zoned recreation. I will also point out that through this process, there was some concern about ensuring that this area right here on the golf course remain recreation in perpetuity. And so there were some negotiations between stakeholders and the Tahoe City PUD about some negotiations between stakeholders and the Tahoe City PUD about doing just that, restricting that land so that it's recreation in perpetuity, and that was actually approved by the Tahoe City PUD, I think last week or the week before. So that's not a part of the area plan necessarily, in terms, but it was a point of negotiation, and they reached that decision to, to deed restrict that land. And, and I will say, that's very consistent with what the community had wanted for that land. So the special planning area over, over this, there's a whole special planning area on this, this part of the golf course, where if you are, if you're proposing to utilize those town center incentives, you do have to do SEZ restoration. So there's a one-to-one match in terms of SEZ restoration. SEZ is Stream Environment Zone, so these are those sensitive lands in the basin. And then you also have to provide some sidewalk extensions. So again, we're restoring sensitive land, and we're providing public, public access. And there's some shared use opportunities there, again, that site is owned by the Tahoe City PUD, so you'll hear later on, about the Tahoe City Lodge project, they're proposing to utilize some of those incentives, but there will be opportunity for other projects in the future to do the same. So in terms, I want to talk real quick about opportunity sites. So the area plan identifies a couple of different opportunity sites, one of them being the Tahoe City Lodge project, the other one being the Kings Beach Design Center Concept. And so these were identified in the area plan and also analyzed in the environmental document. The Kings Beach Center Design Concept was the former, what was called the BBLC site right in town, so this, this is actually Highway, Highway 28, and we're actually kind of sitting right over here. So this property was formerly owned by the Redevelopment Agency, it's now owned by the county, and so the county wanted to really look at, analyze what could potentially go there in the future. And so the concept would be for a mix, some sort of mixed-use redevelopment design concept that would include a lodging component, a civic component, and then some retail. I will point out, this was analyzed at a program level, not, not a project level. And then the Tahoe City Lodge project, this, this project application had come in, so it was underway, and our board directed us to go ahead and analyze it in the document, because it was, it was identified as an opportunity site. And so this one, different from the Kings Beach, was analyzed at a project level. So you'll hear more about that in a minute. So we've had a number of refinements over the last year in response to inputs, so again, we've just really tried to make necessary changes where we can, just in response to concerns that we've heard. I'm not going to go through all these, but I just want to point out, there's been a number of refinements that have been done and published, most recent being what you see in the, the document before you today. So I just want to kind of hone in on the changes that we have made to the document in response to comments received on the draft environmental document, but also some more recent comments that we've received from stakeholders and TRPA governing board members as well. So we have added two new policies related to emergency preparedness evacuation, so we had heard some concern about, about this. And to address that, what we've done is incorporated the Placer County Operational Area East Side Emergency Evacuation Plan. We've incorporated that in the plan by reference, so I think your commission knows that's the plan that governs emergency evacuation here on the east portion, portion of the county. We've also required, added a policy that requires emergency preparedness and evacuation plans to be prepared for all new development in the plan area, so you're going to see that policy as well. We have modified some text and exhibits related to what is called the Lakeside Trail Missing Link. I believe when we were before your commission in the summer, there was a lot of folks that got up about the concern of how this, this aligned trail seg, or this trail segment was illustrated in terms of its alignment in the area plan. And so what we've done is we've eliminated language noting that there was any preferred alternative alignment, and we have also added language noting that any future implementation would require further project and environmental review. We've also revised the exhibit, exhibits related to this alignment, just not to indicate any specific future or planned alignment. We've also modified, again, and I, I pointed this out earlier, but we've modified the CFA to TAU conversion program to reduce that cap. This was in response to some comments that we had heard from stakeholders and TRPA governing board members. We've added some policies related to transit, parking management strategies, and adaptive traffic management. This last piece, the adaptive traffic management, is really to look to coordinating with our partners, TRPA, Caltrans, the Town of Truckee, on looking for traffic strategies to deal with traffic in and out of the basin from not just Highway 89, but also Highway 267. We've added some new policy related to wayfinding signage, excuse me. The idea here is that really emphasis that we would prepare a program in the future that helps with mobility, so it kind of gets folks around town where they can access parking lots and transit stops, and just really, again, underscores this, this desire to increase mobility throughout our town centers. And then we, again, modified the secondary unit program, I talked, spoke to this earlier, but this was in a direct response to comments that we had heard. So again, it would require a restriction for affordability. Initially, we had a quarter-mile buffer where you could, you, in order to have a second unit, you would have to be located within a quarter mile from transit, or a quarter mile from a mixed-use district. And when we ran an analysis, a parcel, a data analysis to see how many parcels were outside of that buffer, there was just a handful. In fact, roughly 10 parcels that were outside of that buffer. And so we are proposing now, in response to comments actually, that we received on the draft document, to eliminate that buffer and just allow all parcels less than an acre to construct a secondary unit. And then again, the requirement for the restriction to prohibit a tourist or vacation use, that was initially proposed, but what we've done is, is strengthened the language in the plan on this, on this piece. We've also modified the North Tahoe East Mixed Use Zoning Map to include all public beachlands in the recreational zone district. There were a couple that were outside, and we've pulled them in to, to the recreational zone district. We've added some language regarding the prioritization of SEZ, again, Stream Environment Zone Restoration Projects. The three key areas include Griff Creek, Pomeen Park, and Burton Creek. These are county-owned, there's county facilities on these restoration areas, they're the largest restoration, restoration areas that, or SEZ areas that need to be restored, so that's why these have been selected. We deleted and modified some uses in the town centers. The laundry and dry cleaning use in Tahoe City has not been eliminated, but it's been modified to require a conditional use permit. Recreational uses in Tahoe City and Kings Beach, there were a couple of uses that were, we, we got comments noting that they were a little bit too intense for the, the town centers, snowmobile courses being one, and another one was RV parks, so those have been eliminated as well in response to comments. And then we've added some policies related to the public trust, just making sure that we have public access to the, to our beachlands up here. Eradication of non-native and terrestrial plants, and protection of the Tahoe Yellow Crest. So those are just vegetation policies that you're going to, they were suggested, and we've included them in the plan. And then I want to kind of talk about some additional revisions that are before your commission today in the form of various erratas that you see. We, in response to very recent input that we've received from stakeholders, we would like to add two mitigation measures as policies to the, to the area plan document. So in the environmental document, we've got mitigation 10-1-H and mitigation 10-1-G that are, again, mitigation measures. The first being, it implements the TRPA congestion management process, and the second is a, is requiring a four-year review cycle of all vehicle trips and mobility strategies. And so what we'd like to do is pull those in as policies into the area plan as well. So again, they're already included in the environmental document as mitigation measures, and so it would simply just be pulling them into the area plan. And so you'll see those contained in, in errata provided to your commission today. And then what's not on here is a, another errata that's before you today. It's regarding a modification to mitigation measure 10-1-C, which is actually for the Tahoe City Lodge, but I want to just point it out that it was requested that we add a clarifying statement in that mitigation, that traffic fees paid by the Tahoe City Lodge would be dedicated to capital improvement projects in the Tahoe region, just specifying that that's where those monies go. And so you'll see that before your commission today. And then I just want to point out too, that the, again, the Regional Plan Implementation Committee yesterday had suggested the change to the area plan regarding the secondary unit program, and so we are requesting that your commission consider adding some language that would basically require a, a four-year review cycle of that program and evaluations, that we can make any necessary adjustments. So there are two topics that were addressed in the staff report that I wanted to discuss with you today. One has to do with community character and scale. You may hear today from folks some concern related to height allowances in Kings Beach along the lakefront. I will say that they're, the, the area plan team that helped with the Kings Beach area, they wanted three stories on the lakeside of, of the highway. We are proposing four, three in some areas on the gateway areas, four as you get a little closer into town. And what we've done though, is we have policies to protect the lake views, just to make sure that we're protecting those lake views. We have added, we've done the core and transition areas, as I had noted earlier, where the height is limited as you come into town, and it gets a little bit more, the, the built environment would be a little bit more intense as you get into the core. We have added, we have site and building standards that would ensure community character, so they would require stepback, setbacks for the second and, you know, third and fourth stories, so that you don't have just a wall of buildings along the town, so that you actually can open up view corridors. A lot of, building articulation kind of standards as well. And then we've also required a, are proposing a new standard that would require four-story buildings along the lake to maintain, if you're going to go to four stories, you would be required to maintain 35% of the site as open view corridors to the lake. So even if you're redeveloping, when you're, when you redevelop with your new project, the idea is that you have to open up some lake view sheds through, with your project. So we feel that with those provisions, that the area plan, while it does go to four stories along the lake, it really does meet that kind of spirit and intent of, of where, where we were going in terms of our visioning. I will point out that, you know, the, the intensification, or the allowance for increased height or density in the town centers is really, the, the reason to do that is a goal of the regional plan to get development off of sensitive lands. So by allowing folks to go a little higher and denser in the town centers, you, you provide an incentive for folks to get the development off of a sensitive land. So we really feel that it's necessary to meet the goals and objectives of the regional plan. The second issue that I wanted to talk about is Kings Beach Mixed Use Zoning and the Shared Use Path, you'll see a section of that in your staff report. There was some concern raised, and I don't think it was raised before your commission when we were here this summer, but it came up at the very end of our public comment review period on the environmental document. There are some folks that have residential uses here in the town of Kings Beach, right along the lake, and they had some concern about those uses being zoned as mixed use. I think it's important to note that this area here, again, is a TRPA-designated town center. It's also designated in their land use classification map as mixed use. So the area plan is simply implementing the TRPA land use map. I'll also point out that those, these lands, all these lands here in Kings Beach have been zoned commercial since 1959. And again, that would allow for a mix of uses, so residential, commercials, tourist uses. So we're not precluding residential uses on their site, it's just that they happen to be contained within this TRPA town center. And so we did meet with these property owners to see if there was a way we could make some refinements to allow use, you know, the, the use allowances on those sites, and suggested that they get back to me, and I hadn't heard back, but you may today, I'm, I'm not sure if they're satisfied after meeting with them and educating them on the process and, and the documents, but you may hear from them today. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve Buena to talk about the Tahoe City Lodge, and I'll make myself available for questions at the end, unless you have one right now? Okay?
Does TRPA have a height limit?
Yeah, so the regional plan, excuse me, I've got a terrible cough. The regional plan in the town centers would allow you to go to four stories or 56 feet.
Okay, and then just one last question for now. When you were deciding, or how was it decided that the core area and the transition area boundary was at a particular place?
Well, coming into, it was more where you see, we kind of looked at the existing built environment, where you start to see the progression of the, the land use and, land use getting a little bit more intense, and we, and we drew those boundaries there. So it was really just kind of a planning exercise of, you know, being out in the field and seeing what's, excuse me, what's on the ground. It was staff, yes, yeah. Anything else? No, thank you.
Steve?
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Steve Buena with Planning Services Division and the project planner for the Tahoe City Lodge project. This project is located in the Tahoe City area, and it's a project that seeks to redevelop an existing commercial property and construct a 118-unit hotel project, clubhouse, and shared parking with the Tahoe City Golf Course. I know most of you are relatively familiar with the area, but I think this, this visual gives a good demonstration of the existing project site and how it relates to some of the surrounding lands. For reference, the area outlined in red is the downtown Tahoe City area that Crystal's been speaking to, and the project site itself is actually located in the yellow circled area. Just to explain some of the surrounding development, down at the bottom of the screen here, this is the, what they refer to as the Y area. This is the intersection between State Route 89 and 28 as you enter into the Tahoe City area. Just right across the street from that is the Save Mart Grocery Store, Public Beach, this is Commons Beach, and the Tahoe Marina Lakefront property is located right about here. One of the other properties I'll be speaking to is just outside the area of the project area, and that's the Bechtold property, which is located right there, and of course, the Tahoe City Golf Course. Now, the Tahoe City Golf Course is managed by the Tahoe City, Tahoe City Public Utility District, and was purchased in 2012 under a memorandum of understanding with Tahoe City PUD, Placer County, Tahoe Truckee Airport District, and the North Lake Tahoe Resort The Tahoe City Lodge project area is roughly three acres inside, in size, and contains the former Henrickson property, which was purchased by Keela Tahoe LLC in June 2014. Included in the project area is a portion of the Tahoe City Golf Course property. The Henrickson property, which is located on, towards the right side of your screen here, contains three commercial buildings with existing uses that include restaurants, furniture stores, a massage studio, building materials, and retail. There are two easements that are associated with this project that are located between the project boundary, which the project boundary, you can see the red line here, they're located between the, the buildings and the project boundary line. These two easements are for ingress and egress. The majority of the easements are located on the Tahoe City Golf Course property, with a small portion located on the Bechtold property, and for reference, this is the Bechtold building right here. Also for reference, and we'll be speaking to in a minute here, here's the clubhouse, which is associated with the Tahoe City Golf Course. Here are some photos of the existing conditions of, of the site. Now, again, this is the former Henrickson property, which is a commercial complex that, similar to today, has had a variety of different commercial uses over, over the years. The structures were originally constructed between 1960 and, and 1962. The, over the years, the, the project site, or the, the property has had a bit of history with a number of violations with both TRPA and Placer County. The project seeks to demolish these existing buildings, and any remaining or outstanding violations will also go by the wayside as part of that. So the project area, again, you can see it outlined in the red area with the slightly darker purple hue there. The entire project area is contained within the mixed-use zoning designation in the new area plan. Under that zoning classification, hotels are listed as permissible use with the approval of conditional use permit. Just for a little bit of clarification on this slide, because it was a little confusing in one of the previous discussions or presentations, mixed use is all of this purple area here, but again, the project area is just limited to the slightly darker area there. So the Tahoe City Lodge project area is requesting several entitlements as part of this approach. this approval process. One's a vesting tentative map. This portion is just simply speaking to the condo hotel portion, which has to do with the individual ownership of a portion of the units that are proposed as part of the project. Conditional use permit, again, this is to allow for the hotel, and this will, some of the findings that are required to be made are whether or not it's consistent with the area plan, which I'll speak to in a few minutes here, and whether the use is appropriate for the site and the surrounding development. Also requested is a variance, a variance to one of the parking standards, and an exception to the implementing ordinances to allow for an increase to the percentage that's allowed for compact parking spaces. On this site plan here, this will also indicate slightly, slightly more faint red line around here, but again, this is the three-acre project, project site. Where the brown buildings are located here, this is the, the location of the former Henrickson property, which comprises approximately 1.4 acres in sight. 1.7 acres of the golf course is being brought into the project area as, as part of this project. So the project proposes to construct three new commercial building, or hotel buildings shown here. These buildings will be up to four stories in height and will comply with the 56-foot height limitation that you've been hearing about. For reference here, State Route 28 is located right in this configuration. This front building right here, this is the building that is going to contain the bulk of the hotel operations. So in this, in this area, the 3,981-square-foot restaurant will be located and the actual operations of the hotel. Also contained in this building will be the, the 40 hotel units that will be retained by the Tahoe City Lodge. The other two buildings, located here and here closer to the golf course, this is where the 78 condo hotel units will be located. Now, for land use purposes, they are hotel units. That's how they're going to, going to continue to function. The distinction between that and the reason for the vesting tentative map has to do with the ownership potential for these, these units. These units, in order to ensure that they do continue to operate as hotel units, will be limited in the number of days that the owners can stay, and this limitation will be a deed restriction. It's also contained as one of the conditions of approval before you. The owners will be limited to a maximum of 90 days within a calendar year and 30 days within any calendar quarter, which makes it consistent with the, the hotel use itself. The remainder of the time these units can be entered into the rental pool that will be operated by the Tahoe City Lodge owners, or operators. Included in the project area, not only bringing the 1.7 acres in, of the golf course into the project area, but a component of this project is also the demolition of the existing clubhouse that's part of the Tahoe City Golf Course and the reconstruction of a new clubhouse. The location of the clubhouse is going to move slightly. It's going to be relocated to where the existing putting green is, so that the putting green can be located closer to the first tee. As far as the footprint goes for this, this structure, it's going to be essentially the same as what you have out there now. Additionally, the ground floor uses are pretty similar to the clubhouse uses and activities that will be contained there as well. What's new to this, this configuration will be a, a second story, which will contain conference room facilities that will be utilized by, by the hotel. Tying these two components together will also be a 132 parking space, shared, shared use parking area that you can see in the, the gray designation here. All of this is located on the Tahoe City Golf Course property, but that is also contained within the, the project area itself. The draft EIR, EIS that was prepared for this project included a parking analysis, which demonstrated that with the offsetting peak uses of the clubhouse and the winter sports park, as well as the uses that are proposed as part of the Tahoe City Lodge, that 132 parking spaces were sufficient to meet the, the parking needs of the project. As an additional measure, there's a condition of approval that will require that a parking management plan be prepared for the project that will address any other operational safeguards that can be put in place to ensure that parking is adequately met. Before I go to the next slide, just so you get a sense of where the vantage point is for the, the next visual, it would be if you were standing right about here looking through the project area, and it will be a rendering of this building here.
Steve, Steve, here, here. Go back to the, the condo units now, you mentioned that, that most of, well, most of the time, three-quarters of the time would be used as hotel, is the, is the hotel, would they manage those two with the hotel rooms?
Correct, yeah. They would be responsible for the management of that.
Okay, because that would be good for consistency of operation.
So here's a, a rendering of the proposed project, and what this does is give you a sense of the architectural style of, of the proposed structure. Just to help explain how the, in relation to the, the different activities of this building, again, this is the building that is operated by, by the lodge. On the ground floor level is where the 3,981-square-foot restaurant and hotel operations will be conducted. The next two stories are where the 40 hotel units that will be operated by the Tahoe City Lodge are contained. Now, earlier I'd mentioned that all the, the structures are up to four stories in height. The difference here is that while, right now, you're looking at a four-story in height building, it appears to be three stories in height. The reason behind this is the front portion of that building that's, that fronts State Route 28 is actually the rooftop terrace component of this. So from an optic standpoint, visual standpoint, it appears to be three stories in height. This, this project did go before the Tahoe Basin Design Site Review Committee on October 25th as an informational item to get some feedback early in advance of the design process. While it wasn't an action item, the committee did offer some feedback, and the general sentiment of the, the committee was that this project fits well within the parcel. Some of the comments were that the design massing scale and height were all appropriate for the proposed project site. The committee also took that opportunity to provide some guidance to some of the design refinements that they may want to see when the project comes back for an action item later on, and those were relative to parking, circulation, landscaping, and, and overall emphasis to continue with the, the mountain, mountain materials that you see here, and the project applicant will speak to in more detail.
Steve?
Yeah?
I had the opportunity to visit the location, and one thing that was interesting to me is I kind of looked at the, the whole town kind of center area, is that this area is lower than the primary area of the, of the town center. And so actually trying to picture this, it's going to look differently if you were down by the Y as you look at the city. This is not going to be a dominant, it, it appeared to me that it was not going to be a dominant structure based on it being at a lower topography than the rest of the, rest of the city or town.
That's correct, yeah. Along State Route 28, this is somewhat of a saddle area. One of the slides that you'll see during the applicant's presentation does a real good job of providing that representation of it being set lower than some of the surrounding commercial properties. So while this project went before the Tahoe Basin Design Site Review Committee as an informational item and it wasn't an action item, it, the project did go before the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council on November 10th, last Thursday, as an action item. At that meeting, Nitrack heard comments from county staff, from the applicant, and the public, and took action to recommend to your planning commission to provide the recommendation for approval of this project. Some of the, the comments during their deliberations that they offered was an excitement about the revitalization of this existing commercial property. I can see Commissioner Severson smiling on that one, as well as they were encouraged by the responsiveness of, of the applicant to some of the comments that, that were received and the, the further refinements to the, the plan or addressing the issues. So during staff's review of the, the project, several different discussion issues came up. Earlier, I spoke about the findings for the conditional use permit and determining that the project would be consistent with the Tahoe Basin area plan. Staff has reviewed the project proposal and determined that it is, in fact, consistent with what is contemplated in the area plan. In fact, tourist accommodation units are one of the uses that's specifically mentioned to help further the pedestrian-oriented design of, of this commercial area. Noise impacts, I'm not going to spend too much time talking about this because, because Ascent will be speaking to this further, but the noise impacts were identified for both the impacts that would occur during the construction of the project, as well as the outdoor activities post-project approval with the rooftop terrace and up at the clubhouse area. Density, earlier I mentioned that 1.7 acres of the project, or of the Tahoe City Golf Course is coming into the project area, and this is pertaining to density. One of the offsets for this that I'll illustrate a little bit better on one of the following slides is that for the 1.7 acres that comes in, there needs to be a one-to-one stream environment zone restoration to allow for this, and I'll demonstrate where some of those potential sites are on one of the following slides. Workforce housing, all projects are reviewed for conformance with the Placer County Housing Element Policy that requires any new development to provide for 50% of the net increase in full-time equivalent employees that are generated by the project. This, the conditions of approval that are before you today do include a condition that will ensure that the project does comply with this requirement. Parking, parking and easements, during the comment period, there was a number of comments about the adequacy of, of the parking. Ascent is going, Adam with Ascent is going to speak a little bit more to that, and I'll highlight the easements and variance portion on the next slide. So again, during the, the comment period for the draft EIR, several refinements were made to the project. Most of these refinements had to do with the, the site plan, project boundaries, things of, of that nature. But also during this time period, additional parking enhancements were offered by the applicant, and he's going to speak to those in his presentation. But probably one of the most significant refinements to the project, you'll probably recall that during the last time that we were before you during the comment period, there was a lot of discussion about the three parking spots that were contained within the, the area located on the Bechtel property. In response to those comments, the applicant chose to relocate those three parking spots entirely off the Bechtel property and onto the Tahoe City Lodge property. Now, just by way of a little bit of background, there is a provision within the, the zoning ordinance that speaks to the design standards for parking areas, and that is that there shouldn't be more than 10 consecutive parking spots without a planner island. The reason behind this is to try to avoid the large parking areas that you have that are completely devoid of, of landscaping, and it's basically a, a large sea of asphalt or concrete. By, by the relocation of those three parking spots, in addition to the constraints of the, the golf course with coverage, there became a conflict with that, that provision, as well as the compact parking stall provision that limits the parking areas to a maximum of 20%. So for compact parking spots, they would be allowed 26 parking spots, and they're asking for 49 as part of this project approval. Staff has evaluated the applicant's request for variance and, and determined that there are special circumstances applicable to this, this project, and that the request itself is actually, the overall design will be consistent with the intent behind that landscape planner island, in that the surrounding, much of the, the land surrounding the parking area is actually the golf course, which provides a wonderful landscape buffer. Also, the long linear nature of the parking area also helps to kind of break up the, the massing and scale, so you don't end up with that large, large lot parking area issue. So earlier I'd, I'd mentioned, yeah.
Steve, was that, wasn't there ever, when we considered that, whenever we did, wasn't it discussed that in snow removal areas, that the planner thing is just a pain in the catoon to try to maintain and get the snow off in the wintertime?
Is that a technical term?
Well, I think everyone understood it. But I, it, it just seemed like it, it's, it should be almost automatic in this, in this area, that removing snow with those things is just a terrible task.
Yeah, the, the provision that the applicant's seeking a variance to is actually out of the zoning ordinance itself, so it's not specific to the, the snow areas, but you're absolutely right. The additional landscape planners do make it a little bit more difficult for the snow removal operators to safely navigate and quickly clear snow.
Thank you.
So the last slide I'm going to speak to is that there's been some confusion, I think the last time I was before the commission on this, there was a discussion about which portions of the project area are actually being used to calculate density. So the project area itself is all of the areas that are colored in here, so that's the green, yellow, blue, and blue areas. Now, for purposes of calculating density, the only portions that are being utilized to determine that three acres, that the density requirement for hotels is 140 units per acre, so the three-acre area is just limited to the area shown in yellow here. So what's excluded from the, the portions of the project area for calculating densities, density are the areas around the clubhouse, this small area right here in this kind of saddle, and, and that's a stream environment zone. And then also specifically excluded is the entirety of the area that's contained within that Bechtel property easement there. So the, and then the last portion that I want to highlight here before I turn it over to Adam, is for that 1.7 acres that's coming into the project area, earlier I'd mentioned that there had to be an offset for the 1.7 areas of stream environment zone restoration. This slide helps to illustrate with all the crosshatched areas, potential areas of stream environment zone where, where that could be restored to mitigate that. And as a condition of approval, there is a, a condition that does require the applicants to restore the 1.7 acres that's being brought in. So with that, I'll turn it over to Adam, but I'll be available for questions if you have any, and, okay?
Concerning the workforce housing? You said that there would be provision saying, in a future date, that would be determined? Is that basically how I read it?
The condition does provide options, and that is condition, condition 91.
Could you refer those options to us quickly?
Absolutely. So those, those conditions would be either to construct housing units to satisfy that, or there is the, the option for the payment of fees as well.
So in lieu?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, good morning. I'm Adam Lewandowski with Ascent Environmental, and thanks for having me today. This summer, when this item was before you, I provided an overview of the analysis in the draft environmental document, the EIR and EIS for the area plan and the lodge project. Today, I'd like to focus a little more on the comments that were received on that draft environmental document and how those were responded to in the final. So the final environmental documents organized into the four main chapters that you can see here on the screen. I did want to point out that chapter two, the corrections and revisions to the draft EIR, EIS, really does two different things. Steve and Crystal explained a number of changes to the, the project and to the area plan since the draft was released, and this chapter evaluates those changes, and it found that those revisions would not result in new environmental impacts or more significant environmental impacts than were analyzed in the draft. That chapter also includes a number of corrections and revisions to the draft environmental document. Many of those are clarifications or technical corrections, but there's also a number of expanded and new mitigation measures that were added in response to comments. expanded and new mitigation measures that were added in response to comments. And I'll talk about those a little bit at the end. I'd like to start with a quick overview of some of the key comments and issues raised related to the Tahoe City Lodge project. And then I'd like to walk through six topics related to the area plan where we received the most comments, where there seemed to be the most interest. In the interest of time, I'll hit on some of these topics very briefly, but there are a number of people from the environmental review team here and we're available to provide more information or answer questions if you have them. So with respect to the Tahoe City Lodge project, the key issues raised in comments were really related to noise and parking. Several nearby residents and property owners expressed concerns about noise specifically related to activities up on the rooftop terrace area here. And in response, a mitigation measure 13-5 from the draft environmental document was expanded and it now requires specific design features to reduce noise from the rooftop terrace. And those design features have to be evaluated by a qualified acoustic specialist to certify that they'll maintain the Placer County noise standards at the adjacent properties. There are a number of concerns raised related to parking. Some people expressed concern about the adequacy of parking. This was evaluated in a detailed parking demand study is included in chapter 10 of the draft environmental document. And it found that the Tahoe City Lodge project does provide adequate parking for peak periods. There are also a number of comments related to the distance of the parking from the entrance of the lodge and concerns that that would result in spillover parking across the street of the Tahoe Marina Lakefront property or along State Route 28. This was evaluated in the final environmental document and it found that while it's possible that some customers or employees could park in the public spaces along State Route 28, that's not very likely because parking is limited to two hours during the day and there's no overnight parking during the winter. And the adjacent property across the street is chained and signed to prevent others from parking there. There are also a number of comments related to parking in the easement, the access easement that's shared with the adjacent Bechtel property. And in response to those comments, the parking layout in the project was redesigned. Those parking spaces were removed from the easement and distributed elsewhere in the project site. I did want to point out that the EIR and EIS evaluated four different lodge alternatives and it found that there were trade-offs between the action alternatives, but they were really roughly comparable. None of those action alternatives really rose as an environmentally superior alternative, although they were all found to be environmentally superior to the no-action alternative. There are a number of comments on the area plan that related to stream environment zone restoration. Many of these suggested that the area plan should do more to promote environmental restoration or they expressed concerns that there was too much of a focus on private property restoration rather than on public land restoration. So in response, the final environmental document really clarifies that public restoration is still a priority. And as Crystal mentioned, the area plan itself has been modified to identify some additional priority restoration areas. The final environmental document does clarify that the area plan includes the regional plan incentives for restoration, so things like incentives for transferring development out of sensitive land, mitigation requirements, that sort of thing are all carried forward. But then it does include some additional incentives and requirements for restoration. And these are mainly in those special planning areas that Crystal mentioned. So there's a requirement for restoration within 30 feet of the Truckee River in the Tahoe City Western Gateway Special Planning Area and there are requirements for additional restoration in the Tahoe City Golf Course and along Griff Creek in the Kings Beach Entry Special Planning Area. Affordable housing was another topic that generated a lot of comments. Most of these comments were on the secondary residential unit program and on the area plan itself rather than the environmental analysis. And Crystal outlined some of the changes that were made to the area plan in response to these comments. The final environmental document describes those changes and evaluates them. It also clarifies how the in lieu fees are used to provide affordable housing and it describes the steps being taken by the county to address short-term rentals that could potentially displace affordable housing. There were a number of comments that were more site-specific and many of these raised concerns about the zoning of a portion of Kings Beach that's south of State Route 28, west of Seacline Street. And others addressed the alignment of the Missing Link Bike Trail in Tahoe City near the Tahoe Marina Lakefront community. Again, these were mainly comments on the area plan itself rather than the environmental review and Crystal explained how the area plan was revised to address some of these. The final environmental document does provide additional detail and clarification on exactly where zoning changes are and are not occurring. And it also explains that the environmental document doesn't review and the area plan doesn't approve any specific trail alignments and any future trail projects would have to go through their own design and environmental review process. Emergency evacuation was another topic that generated a lot of comments. There were concerns expressed that new development would increase traffic and that would slow emergency evacuation time. So this is evaluated in the final environmental document. We first looked at the development potential and as you are probably aware, development in the Tahoe region is limited by the TRPA Growth Control System, the allocations and bonus units that were discussed earlier. So the area plan itself wouldn't change the development potential in this plan area. What it does is affects where that development could occur in the design of that development. So we prepared an emergency evacuation analysis that's based on full buildout of the area plan and evaluate a scenario where the entire area plan was evacuated. And there's a couple of key points that came up in this analysis. One is that during an emergency evacuation scenario, the traffic lights and other traffic control measures would be overridden and you'd have public safety officials who are manually directing traffic. And then routes accessing the evacuation area would be closed and that would provide the entire roadway capacity for those who are evacuating. So that means that if you have traffic delays during kind of normal busy periods, that doesn't necessarily translate into the same type of delays during an evacuation. So the evacuation analysis, again, evaluated evacuation of the entire plan area and it found a less than significant impact when compared to existing conditions and really no discernible difference between the different alternatives. So that means the evacuation scenario really isn't different with or without the area plan. The final environmental document also clarifies the role of the existing evacuation plans as well as the new requirement for individual projects to prepare an evacuation plan. And then the topic that got the most comments and probably the most attention was transportation and traffic. So I'd like to spend a little more time on this. And when we're talking about traffic and transportation in the environmental document, we're really discussing two separate things. The first is the vehicle miles traveled, the total vehicle miles traveled in the Tahoe Basin during a busy day. And that's kind of the regional amount of traffic. And then the other topic is level of service, the site-specific traffic delays at individual intersections, individual road segments. So this table shows the VMT and the level of service under existing conditions right here, under buildout of the area plan, under buildout of the plan area without the area plan, so continuing the existing plans. And then it includes the cumulative buildout with the area plan and without the area plan. So you can see that the area plan would actually reduce the VMT, the vehicle miles traveled below existing conditions. And that makes sense because as Crystal explained, the intent of the area plan really is to relocate and concentrate development into Tahoe City and Kings Beach in areas that have shorter trip lengths and where there are more opportunities for transit and other kind of multimodal forms of transportation. Without the area plan, under buildout conditions, VMT would increase above existing levels. That's the same amount of development as under the area plan, but it would be more spread out in areas where there are longer trip lengths and less opportunity to use other types of transportation. The cumulative buildout looks at buildout of the Tahoe Basin area, external areas, and then it also adds specific assumptions that look at the maximum potential buildout of adjacent areas. So it considers the entire buildout of the Martis Valley Community Plan, the town of Truckee and the highway 89 corridor between Truckee and the area plan, so the Squaw Project and other projects in that area. And it found that with all that cumulative development, VMT would increase under any scenario, but it would increase less with the area plan than without. And these would remain a less insignificant impact because they're underneath the, they're less than the TRPA regional VMT standard. So we look at level of service. You can see that today there's one intersection, the Grove Street and State Route 28 intersection in Tahoe City that exceeds the level of service standard. And that intersection would continue to exceed that standard under any scenario with or without the area plan and would get a bit worse. Today, there's one roadway segment that exceeds the level of service standard. That's from Grove Street to the Tahoe City Y along State Route 28. Today, that exceeds the level of service standard in one direction. Under buildout conditions, that would exceed that standard in both directions in any scenario with or without the area plan. So these level of service exceedances were identified as a significant impact in the environmental document and the reduction in VMT was identified as a beneficial effect on vehicle miles traveled. So many of the comments were on the technical and analytical approach and those could really be addressed by providing additional clarity and background and detail on the assumptions and the analysis. So I won't go into these, but there is a lengthy response that provides a lot of detail on the analytical approach. But many of the comments really provided specific suggestions on ways to try to reduce traffic. And you know, these were comments that county and TRPA staff took very seriously. They reviewed each comment to see if it was feasible and if those suggestions really would reduce traffic. And many of those comments were actually incorporated into new and expanded mitigation measures. So in total, there were two mitigation measures from the draft environmental document that were expanded and then there were five additional transportation-related mitigation measures that were added. Again, these mitigation measures are intended to address the level of service impact, but they would have the added benefit of further reducing vehicle miles traveled. So this shows the two mitigation measures that were expanded. In the draft environmental document, mitigation 10-1A required the construction of a pedestrian beacon crossing at Grove Street and State Route 28, but it didn't specify when that had to be completed. So the final environmental document revises that mitigation measure to require that that be constructed within three years of adoption of the area plan. And in fact, county staff believe it could be constructed within two years, but there's a three-year deadline. Mitigation measure 10-1B established a county service area zone of benefit and this would provide an ongoing annual funding for transit expansions. The draft environmental document required that these fees be high enough to fund an additional 16 hours of transit service during the winter peak period. So that's enough funding to pay for any additional buses, fuel, drivers, whatever's needed to expand that transit service during the winter peak period. But the final environmental document expands that requirement so that it must provide 16 hours of additional transit service during the winter as well as during the summer. And there's also a lot more detail in the mitigation measure that provides more examples and discussion on how that zone of benefit actually works. And there's a good example actually in the Martis Valley Community Plan with a functioning zone of benefit. This shows two of the new mitigation measures that were added. The first one addresses requirements for transportation demand management plans. These plans are already required for businesses with over 100 employees and they require that the business implement strategies to try to reduce vehicle use. So things like providing shuttle buses or paid parking to encourage carpooling or transit uses or providing subsidized transit passes. But much of the traffic in the plan area is from employees of smaller businesses with less than 100 employees or from visitors rather than employees. So this mitigation measure would expand those requirements so that businesses with 20 or more employees would have to prepare and implement these transportation demand management plans as well as new recreation or tourist projects that generate trips from visitors. Mitigation measure 10-1E requires the preparation implementation of a comprehensive wayfinding program. And the intent here is really to make it easier for visitors to get to the Tahoe Basin to, you know, either drive and park once and get around with transit or to take transit here and be able to get around and move between parking areas and transit and bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. And then there were three additional mitigation measures that I think really realize or recognize that the area plan is not the be-all, end-all solution for all of the traffic problems, but that there's continued work needed in this area. So the first mitigation measure commits TRPA and the county to working together collaboratively over the long term to continue to improve mobility strategies based on traffic data that's being provided by Caltrans and other partner agencies. The next one, mitigation 10-1G is a little more specific and that requires a four-year review of the actual traffic levels and a comparison of those levels to the traffic levels that were projected in the environmental document. If the actual traffic levels exceed the amounts that were projected in the environmental document, then it commits TRPA and the county to working together to develop additional mobility strategies. And then mitigation 10-1H commits the county to working with TRPA in the development and implementation of its congestion management process. This is something that TRPA is already working on and it looks at regional transportation improvements and regional approaches to try to reduce congestion. So taken together, these new and expanded mitigation measures really do incorporate a lot of the suggestions that came in in comments and all of these would be required if the area plan's adopted. So with that, I'd like to turn it back over to Crystal. And as I mentioned, myself and other members of the environmental team are here if you have questions or want more information.
Yeah, I don't have a question, but I liked that 10-1G because I think sometimes we do these plans, we say the traffic is going to be such and such and then we never go back and see if it actually happened or didn't happen or how far it missed or how far it actually made it. So that's a good, that's a good condition.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the intents of that, that, you know, you can never really tell what's going to happen in the future and we use the best information, try to project out future traffic levels, but this kind of addresses any uncertainty.
One of my little favorite comments is that traffic studies are not exact science. So, thank you. Okay, Crystal.
Thank you, Adam. So before I turn it over to Samir Tuma who has a short presentation for your commission, I just want to first summarize the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council's recommendations. So we did go before their council on November 10th, not in time to actually summarize their recommendation in your staff report packet, so I want to do that here today. They did take a vote on the, they deliberated again separately on both the area plan and the Tahoe City Lodge. They voted in support of the area plan. It was a 7-0 vote to recommend approval. They also voted in support of the Tahoe City Lodge project, 6-0 to recommend approval. One member had abstained. And I just want to point out that they, in general, the meeting went very well. They did note that they were very happy and impressed with the responses to comments, very satisfied with how we had addressed concerns and really worked with stakeholders to create a plan that they feel, you know, really meets the spirit and intent of the regional plan. They also pointed out that they were very much in support of the Tahoe City Lodge project. One statement was that they feel it's one of the best development projects in the area and that the project applicant has really worked to meet community concerns. And then with that, what I'm going to do is just provide you with staff's recommendation on both the area plan and the Tahoe City Lodge and then I'll turn it over to Samir. So the Development Review Committee recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the following items to the Board of Supervisors. First is adoption of a resolution to certify the final environmental impact report and a RADA B before your commission today, which modifies mitigation measure 10-1-C. So these are prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. Also, adopt the findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations and mitigate the mitigation monitoring reporting program and a RADA A that's provided before your commission today for consideration. That would be modifying mitigation measure 10-1-C as well. This would be supported by the findings set forth in that resolution and attachments. We also request that you recommend adoption of a resolution to approve the Tahoe Basin area plan. That's attachment C, including a RADA C of attachment C as contained on page 98 and 99 of your staff report as well as a RADA C provided to your commission today, which provides some additional policies. And then also recommend in that same action on the area plan that you direct staff to add a provision to require a four-year evaluation of the secondary unit program. Third, we recommend that you recommend approval to the board to adopt an ordinance to approve the Tahoe Basin area plan implementing regulations and amend Placer Code, Chapter 17, Article 17.02, Article 17.56, and appendices B, C, D, and F. Those are contained in Attachment D of your staff report package, and this would be supported by the findings in the said ordinance, findings set forth in Section 2. And then four, adopt an ordinance to rezone the properties within the Tahoe Basin Area Plan, as included in Attachment E of your staff report, supported by the findings set forth in that ordinance. So that's the recommendation for the area plan. For the Tahoe City Lodge Project, we recommend that your commission make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to certify the Tahoe City Lodge final environmental impact report, prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, also including the, the ERADAs that I had mentioned before, which would be a RADA B, modifying MM 10-1C, and a RADA A doing the same. And then also to adopt the findings in fact, statement of overriding consideration, and adoption of the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for this project. We also request approval of a vesting tentative map to create a one lot to allow for condo plan, and a conditional use permit to allow for a 118-unit hotel, and a variance to Section 17.54.070A2D of the zoning ordinance, to remove the requirement that the plan or islands be located every 10 parking spaces within the parking areas, and an exception to Chapter 3, Section 3.07 of the Parking and Access Standards of the Implementing Regulations that are before your commission today, to allow an increase in the maximum number of compact parking spaces permissible from 20% to 38%, where a total of 132 parking spaces would be provided with the project. And this would be subject to the findings contained within the staff report. Also recommend approval of the conditions of approval before you, contained in Attachment D of the staff report, as well as the RADA provided to your commission today. That would amend Condition 44 and 59. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it, I think I have one more slide, just to talk real quick about next steps. Following this meeting today, we will present these projects before the Placer County Board of Supervisors on December 6th. And then there are a number of hearings that need to be held before TRPA as well. So it'll be before the TRPA Advisory Planning Commission on December 7th, before their Regional Plan Implementation Committee. Again, that's a committee made up of governing board members. That'll be December 14th. And then finally, to the TRPA Governing Board to consider a final adoption of the area plan. It'll either be January 25th or 26th. There's a two-day meeting, and I don't know exactly what day it's on, but it'll be one of those two days. So, okay, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Samir Tuma. Thanks.
Okay, before we start the comments, why don't we take a five-minute break? Then we'll get all the comments in a row, if that's okay? Or would you like to continue with this one here?
This is actually part of the formal presentation before we get to comments.
Okay, go ahead. Why don't you do that?
But if you guys need a break?
No, no, then we'll take the break.
I'll stand up and, you know, shake it out a little bit.
That may not, that may not be the only solution.
Blow dryer.
Okay.
I, I promise to be brief. What we've, what we've heard this morning really is the foundation. All the planning documents, all the planning processes we've been through really sets the basis for projects to come to life. And so what I really want to focus on now is bringing a project to life, giving you guys a little bit better understanding of what it's going to be, and talk a little bit about the benefits. We've spent well over three years now in this process. First came to know about this process through a friend of mine who's a local realtor here. And we spent, literally, we've been held over 100 meetings, several hundred hours of time with, not only formal meetings with, with folks like yourselves, but also importantly stakeholders, the League to Save Lake Tahoe, members of the community, members of the business community, and others, everybody who's really interested in, in this process. And we did that in large part to help develop the vision for what this should be. And really, the salient points, what we heard was, we need lodging, we want it to be high quality, we need it to have a positive impact on the environment, and we need a kick on the economy. That was really kind of the essence of, of what we heard. And so that was, that was how we developed the vision that we've come up with. When we got down to some more details, people said, well, you know, we're concerned about the idea that these, that there's now going to be the potential for four stories. Is this thing going to be big? Is it going to look out of place? What can you do there? Also, you know, this is an environmental, environmentally sensitive area. We would like it to be green, and we'd also like it to still look and feel like Tahoe, but maybe a little bit more updated than some of the things that are around. And so this is what, this is the rendering that we developed in response to, to those comments. And Steve's talked about much of it, but I think there were several key elements to making this the building that's down by the street, which is to create a much more pedestrian scale. If you look, it's a little bit hard to see, but there is a canopy that runs along the front, so as people are walking by, you, you don't feel this large building next to you. You sort of feel this much more pedestrian-scale building. On top of that, there's a green roof, which will be part of the project, so again, to enhance the, the environmental components. And then on the top floor, the open air decks will be, will be great amenity. One side of it will be open to the public, which is what you see there on the left, and then the other side will be for guests at the hotel. Want to go back to Commissioner Nader's comment about sort of the way that the, where we are in town. So this is a simulation that was done, see if my pointer can work, where we took a snapshot of the view, and these were, by the way, simulations are part of the environmental document and were reviewed in that capacity. But what you see here, this is the new proposed building. And so with the landscaping that surrounds it, the other buildings that are there, the fact that we're sort of coming down the hill, you know, that's, that's, the top of that parapet right there is at four stories. The massing of the building is pretty much at three stories. So we figured this is a, this is a pretty good demonstration of, of how it fits in with community character. Another concern that we heard was, well, what's it going to look like from the golf course? People are golfing back there. Right now, we have these red, white, and blue buildings that aren't so attractive. Gee, we're going to get something that's better out of this. And I think the answer is yes, because in there, you'll see Kenzie, bits and pieces of the hotel along the back. And so yes, it will be four stories along there, but we have the, you know, it's nice, there's a nice natural screening from the, the trees that are back there. The colors that will be used will blend in much more with nature. So in terms of the aesthetics, this isn't going to be some big thing that's going to come in out of nowhere. And all of this was, was designed in response to what we heard from the community. So obviously, one of the things that was important to the community, and I will also tell you is very important to me personally, as well as our investment group, we have spent a lot of time thinking about the environmental benefits of any project that we've done anywhere. And so we've really driven that into, into, into what this project has to offer. Obviously, we're going to get rid of a sort of universally despised set of buildings, if you will, in town. Yes, there's going to be traffic, but when you look at the analysis that was done in the environmental impact report, the traffic for the no-project alternative, if nothing gets done here, is actually considerably more than what our project is going to be. Significant SEZ restoration, which you've heard about, and also, of our own volition, we are going to be building to a LEED standard. It's not required, but we will be doing that because we believe in the value of those construction methods. And also, we own and operate other hotels, and we operate them all under green hotel standards. And so there's a number of things we do operationally to make sure that we, as a hotel, are responsible in how the, how the, how we impact the environment. A lot of what I've heard from the community, and there, a lot of the excitement is, yes, getting rid of that building, but also creating an economic engine here, really bringing significant dollars to town, not only during the construction process, but on an ongoing basis, over eight and a half million dollars created through TOT, property taxes, jobs, and things like that. And so that, you know, that went to the, the second pillar of what, what the community was telling us, was we really need a hotel that's going to generate positive economic So what happens if this doesn't happen? Well, as I said, you're going to get significantly vehicle, significantly more vehicle miles traveled under the no-project alternative, because we will take the existing shopping center, remodel it, and, and make it better. That's all we're allowed to do, that's what we'll do. We, there won't be any coverage reduction. There's, this, this project offers over 10,000 square feet of coverage reduction. That's, that wouldn't happen. There wouldn't be any SEZ restoration on the golf course. We would still have the old buildings, and no matter what we do, they're not going to be super energy-efficient. And we, we would, you know, there would be some economic gain from, I think, a better shopping center, but certainly not the kind that we're talking about with the project. We have, I think, from day one, been very, very transparent, very proactive, working with the community. Like I said, we've held lots of meetings, some in private, some in public, addressing concerns, because I've, I'm always a firm believer that not only is it important to be a good neighbor, but also the project gets better if you listen to people, and if you understand what the concerns are. And I will say, one thing that is different about hotel development versus a lot of other development is we, I have to build a hotel. If I'm going to be successful, I have to build a hotel that works for the neighbors, but also one that works for my guests. And so there was concern about off-site noise. Absolutely. We, we need to make sure that we're not creating noise from that rooftop deck that bothers our neighbors that's across the highway. But I also have to make sure I'm not creating noise that bothers my guest who's right underneath of that space, or the, all the, all the guests that are there. Same thing when it comes to parking. I have to make sure that we have enough parking on that site, otherwise my guests are not going to come back. So it's important for us to have enough parking from an operational perspective. We were asked by some to reduce the number of parking spaces as a potential incentive to get people to take public transportation. We resisted that. We wanted to have adequate parking. It's important. It's important for the neighbors, and it's also important for us. We did listen. We responded, I think, in a very positive way to our immediate neighbors who had some concerns about where the parking was going to be, where the noise was going to be. We added, we added mitigation measures and, and really responded to those concerns, because that's how I believe a project gets better, and we're going to be here for a long time. We want to be good neighbors. Finally, we have decided to put some additional components into our program that are not required, that are not mitigation measures, that no one is making us do, but we think they're the right thing to do. And so those include, as I said before, the LEED building. We will be building to a LEED building standard. We haven't fleshed it out long enough, far enough to know which of those standards, but it will be at least a LEED goal. The operations will be operated that way. We also, you know, we're big believers in public transit. We're going to incent, try to incentivize our guests, or, sorry, our employees to come to the site through public transit. We will be giving supplementing with transit passes. The other thing we're going to be doing to incentivize them to come not in a vehicle is we will have bike racks outside that are dedicated for the employees. We will also have showers and changing rooms in the host hell facilities for those employees. So when you ride to work on a warm day, you get there, you don't have to be sweaty all day, you can take a shower, and off you go. So we really are serious about this. We really want to encourage biking. We will also have EV charging stations. We think as the technology gets better and better with EV cars, we'll see more of them coming long distances from out of the area. We want to, we want to be able to provide that opportunity so that they can charge locally if they, you know, so that, for their ride home. And also, we'll have a bike program for our guests. We're still working on what that would be. In an, in an ideal world, we would get a, a program that is sort of Tahoe citywide, that incorporates a lot of bicycles from different locations and different nodes, so people can take bikes around and leave them. We don't know exactly what that program's going to be, but it's something that we think is, is going to be fun for our guests, and I think would be great for, for getting around town without the car. So with that, I am here to answer any questions. I would like to reserve the opportunity to come back up after public comment and just address any concerns that may be raised in that time. Again, available for any questions.
I have one question. At this point, do you have, under consideration, what type of workforce housing proposal you'll be accepting?
Under, under, the workforce housing components that have been proposed, we would, we will be paying an in-lug fee. That's our, that's the option that we would go. I will tell you, there's a lot of talk about workforce housing in this community, and it's, it concerns a lot of people. It scares the daylights out of me, because if, this industry in particular, the hotel industry, requires not only people, not only bodies, but ones who have a hospitality orientation, ones who are professional, who carry themselves to a high standard. So I'm very concerned about, about this myself. I will tell you, completely unrelated to this, we are looking at a slightly larger-scale project, separate from this project, which is focused on workforce housing. A very good friend of mine recently opened the Base Camp Hotel here in town, and he opened it, I think about five or six months ago. He's already lost his general manager because he couldn't afford to live here. So it's a problem. I completely get that, and we're going to be part of the solution. Beyond what we're going to pay with, with the in-lug fees, we're going to have to find a solution that works, because without it, you know, I'm, I'm not going to be successful. I'm very well aware of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions this time? If not, that closes, I guess, the part of the formal presentation. Now, take our 10-minute break. I've upped it from five to 10. We'll be back. Let's see. Quiet, please. I've been informed by a staff that 17 people signed up, so we're not going to be calling names, we're just going to let you come up as you will. Address, give the name for the record, and limit to three minutes, and hopefully it can be shorter if somebody before you has already made the point. So whoever wants to be first, so we'll just do it like you just did. Thank you, sir, for coming up first.
You're welcome.
Name for the record.
Mark Gogoluski.
Oh, wait a second, we don't have this.
Is this the name?
We got some, he's working on it. Okay, try now.
All right, my name is Mark Gogoluski.
Okay, Mark.
And my first point's going to be, I strongly recommend that you guys adopt a process where you fix the time for public commentary, because I have to leave in 10 minutes, and if you weren't allowing me to speak first, I wouldn't be able to speak.
Okay, well, thank you for coming up first, and that's good.
So I've been a full-time resident for five years. I've been an enthusiastic skier for 25. And I'm co-owner of the Tahoe City Art House in Senoma. And I'm strongly in favor of this project, specifically because Tahoe City desperately needs something to change the economy. I mean, anyone who's paid attention, it's cratered. And as a business owner, the offseason is horrible, and it's literally a matter of survival. And the only idea I've heard, and I've heard it for years, is that we need an anchor hotel to bring in events. And I know a number of other small business owners in town who feel exactly the same way. I ran a software company for 15 years in Silicon Valley, and the only time we came to the Tahoe region is when we got a deal. It's kind of funny, it was Squad Village, right when it opened up, they had no, you know, they had no brand, they weren't known, and we got a half-price deal, and we brought our entire company in for a week. And that's the kind of opportunity that a hotel like this one will bring. And we need, whether it's a corporate event or a sports event, we need a reason for people to show up in Tahoe City. There's none. And anyone who's tried to go out and have dinner on a Monday or Tuesday night during the offseason can tell you, sometimes it's really hard to get.
You're going to starve, huh?
Yeah, you go home. Yeah, absolutely. And I won't take any more time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert White in Tahoe City. I'm on the board of the Tahoe Marina Lakefront Homeowners Association. The bottom line is, I got up today to speak to just say that the Tahoe Marina Lakefront Homeowners Association supports the Tahoe City Lodge project. And as you probably are aware, they are directly across the street from our location. I did want to spend just a minute talking about the process that we went through with the lodge, particularly because some of the words thrown around about stakeholders and collaboration are just jargon, and I wanted to give you an example of how this can actually work. During the summer, when there were various hearings on the Tahoe Basin Area Plan and the lodge, we held what I would call informal, or in the hallway discussions with Samir about his project. He then reached out to us and said, "If you have some issues, why don't we have a formal meeting with your board and your homeowners, and myself, and I'll try to address any issues you might have?" We held that meeting in early October. It was a very candid, very productive, and fairly comprehensive discussion of the things that were on the minds of our homeowners. Those kinds of issues included things like noise, parking, signage, and use of amenities. I think we walked away from that saying there was a joint understanding of the issues. There was a joint understanding of how those issues would be resolved, not only now, but in the future. And there was a joint understanding that this is a process that is not static, and so it's very important to understand and get a feeling for the intent of the people you're working with. We do believe that the lodge will be a good neighbor, and therefore, we support the project. We also think there's some lessons to be learned by working with them, and that's that when you get the true stakeholders working together, they can come up with practical and realistic outcomes. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Brad Hester. I'm a 40-year resident of Tahoe City. I own a real estate office and a retail store in Tahoe City. I had originally wrote some notes down about, let's talk about urban infill and the blight that it's going to replace, and the economic impacts, but you're going to hear a lot of that. So just a little history of that from my perspective of this building, what it has meant to the town, and what it will mean to change. I moved here in the mid-'70s. That building looked exactly like it looks today, except for the damn swimming pool was there. And there's been no change. Even today, it's occupied, but it's kind of struggling along. Forty percent of it is probably still condemned, which is the way it was in the mid-'70s. It is sorely, we sorely need that to be demoed and made into something productive for our society and the economy. At one time, I thought I'd probably be dead before it was done. So I salute it, I support it overwhelmingly.
Good morning, or I guess afternoon now, Commissioner Shannon Eckmeyer, League to Save Lake Tahoe, and actually want to request five minutes as an organization. I'll try to be quick. We are here to support the plan, and I just want to highlight parts of the plan, the environmental review, and the lodge itself, because I think it's important for you to hear. So that being said, I'll dive into the plan first. You already saw a presentation on the deed restriction and Tahoe City Town Center modification. The deed restriction language itself came through two years of renditions on the Tahoe City Golf Oversight Committee group, which consists of Placer County, PUD, Truckee Tahoe Airport, and the North Tahoe Resort Association. We understand deed restrictions are scary and not easily accepted, so really appreciate everyone and their support on that, and the PUD for passing it. The designated stream environment zones that have been identified for environmental restoration work, policy including the mobility strategy and the Fanny Bridge visioning and parking strategy to really improve mobility in the Tahoe City area. Policy relating to the TARP plan that your board adopted earlier this year to improve public transit. TMDL language policy that the league requested following other area plans that have been adopted. This will be important for the four-year review of the area plan and certification to demonstrate how Placer County is reaching water quality goals, and the height transition zones. I specifically wanted to highlight some things for the environmental review for all of you. I know I've stand before you with concerns and other environmental reviews, but really wanted to highlight Placer County is the lead agency here on this FEIS. They took our comments seriously on the draft review and worked with Ascent Environmental and TRPA to not only respond to our concerns, but really add some mitigation measures that you heard about, that have some out-of-the-box thinking. I'm not going to list them all, but I really wanted to highlight the four-year vehicle trip review and the TRPA congestion management process. We're really excited to see these, not only as mitigation measures, but that they're going to be included as policy. We'll be able to use this as a tool, not for only other area plans, but to work with our traffic expert and your team in trying to create transportation solutions for the area, and also, more importantly, so that we can use it lobbying for public transit funding on a federal and local level. And the Tahoe City Lodge project, league has not publicly supported a redevelopment project for over 10 years. This is the type of project we were hoping to see when we supported the regional plan update. Samir and his team have been working with us from the beginning. It includes things that you've heard, like the SEZ restoration, coverage reduction, and also out-of-the-box thinking, like bus passes for employees, stations for employees that ride their bikes, a bike program, and lead certification. We're hoping that this can be a model for other projects within the basin. So this area plan really is a model that we want other area plans to follow, and something that we were envisioning. And I want to end, just by really thanking and recognizing all of the partners, the Tahoe City PUD, Cindy Gufferson, everyone on the Tahoe City Oversight Golf Committee, Samir and his team, TRPA, Ascent Environmental, your consultant Gordon Shaw, but most importantly, your staff, Placer County, and that includes everyone from your CEO, city council, I'm sorry, county council, I was in the city yesterday, and your traffic engineers, Commissioner Sevenson. Everyone took hundreds of hours to meet with us over the past four years in Auburn, Northlake, Southlake, and we might not have always agreed on everything, but we came to conclusions, and that's the area plan that's in front of you today. And I just want to end by specifically recognizing and thanking Crystal Jacobson. It's almost five years ago when her and I sat down at the start of this area plan process, and we've been in communication ever since. And this is not her only project, so she is an incredibly dedicated staff member that you're all lucky to have. Not only did she work with the league, but community members to make sure there was an area plan in front of you today to get public support. So we ask that you adopt this plan. The environmental review and the Tahoe City Lodge is presented to you today.
Crystal, you get a raise with that last recommendation. Make sure you take that to your boss.
Thank you, Shannon.
Good afternoon, or is it morning? Anyway, I don't have a watch on me. So Steve Glazer, West Shore Realty. I have represented clients at 2980 Northlake Boulevard, which is the eastern entrance to Lake Forest and Northlake Boulevard. We have been involved with this planning process in the Tahoe City Plan since 2012 with Citizens Committee and written letters in 2014. We're requesting a correction to a long We're requesting a correction to a longstanding Placer County TRP mistake that made 2980 Northlake Boulevard out of the Lake Forest Special Area Number One, which removed it from special commercial uses. It is strictly multifamily residential. The property historically and consistently and still is used as commercial property. August of this year, we wrote a letter, my clients wrote a letter to the county supervisors and the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency Board as well. We've not seen any kind of written response from them yet. In going over where this property is, it's right along where a bike path is. And I just heard from my clients the other day that Tahoe City PUD is going to do snow removal on that bike path all the way during the winter. So, it'd be ideal for a multifamily or in a commercial use, people could walk and still go to Lake Forest. There's still fishing and recreational opportunities in Lake Forest at the boat ramp there. So, my clients officially request, because of the merits of the property, that the parcel be reinstated into the sub-district of Lake Forest. Now, I know I'm not going to get any traction there with the TRPA and possibly not with your board today. I did hear from Crystal today that you're going to relook at a future date in the future, the property along 89 along the Truckee River. So, that's going to be potentially relooked at in planning processes. Hopefully, we'd be included in that potential relook. Finally, what I'd like to say is, in the future, my clients are going to sell the property to a developer, and there's going to be probably a multi-use type of use, residential and some type of commercial. So, hopefully, you would, as a board, Placer County Commissioner Board, be look favorably at it and confirm and vote in favor of sending it along to the Board of Supervisors that you would support a multi-use for this property. Thank you. Man. Three minutes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Pat Davison. I'm with the Contractors Association of Truckee Tahoe. Want to start off with echoing Shannon's comments, high praise for Crystal. She's been very responsive as recently as two hours ago, helping me understand a recent change, and she also answers emails after hours, so very dedicated employee. We did provide some written comments, I'm not going to go through those, I'll just hit some highlights. Suffice to say that our members are engaged in the housing issue every day as they find qualified employees and then realize that the employee's not going to stay on board because there's not an affordable place for the employee to live. We have been involved in the second unit issue. We were before you last year with the zoning text amendment concerning second units outside the basin, and again, in front of you today regarding second units in the basin. Why do we focus on second units? Because it's one of the easier solutions to fix the affordable housing crisis. The regional housing study, which was commissioned by the Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation, identified a need, a current existing need for about 12,000 housing units in our area. So, that's one of our incentives. The other to be involved in this issue is, again, it's an easier way to solve the problem. The Tahoe Basin Area Plan Environmental Analysis only assumed 1.25 second units per year over the 20-year lifespan of this plan. That's a disappointing commentary on what we collectively think we can achieve. The plan's goals for affordable workforce housing are very modest. It will take a long time to see improvement, and that was the context in which we framed our three comments. The first was, we were requesting that all residential parcels be eligible for second units, and thank you, Placer County, for agreeing to that change. The second request was the concern about market rate allocations being used for a second unit. Again, thank you to Placer County for taking market rate allocations out of the second unit program. Second units will only be created through the other deed-restricted mechanisms. And the third request was a desire that a locals-only deed restriction be used rather than an income-based deed restriction, because we thought the income cap would be a disincentive to a homeowner thinking about building a second unit. The income-based deed restriction ties the monthly rent to the state mandated income levels. The income-based deed restriction for affordable, which is very low-income housing, has a 55-year lifespan according to TRPA. The income-based deed restriction for moderate-income housing, which uses the TRPA bonus units, is in perpetuity. Although the county believes the HCD price is close to the current market price for area rentals and will not be a disincentive, I urge strong caution. The county can't force a homeowner to build a second unit. You can help them consider the idea. I'm so sorry, requesting additional time as an organization. All right, I'll cut to the chase. We do agree with the recommendation. Crystal asked for an amendment to your ordinance and actions today that would provide the four-year review. So, that's a great step in the right direction. We also are a little concerned that nobody's looking at the second unit program between now and 2021, which would be that four-year. So, some sort of annual check-in or report would be an additional request. Thank you very much for your attention.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Scott Willers. I'm speaking today, in a nutshell, basically to say that I'm in support of the Tahoe City Lodge project. I've been a visitor of Tahoe City since I was a child with my family for as far back as I can remember. I am a full-time resident of Tahoe City for the past 22 years and a homeowner in downtown Tahoe City right off of Jack Pine Street for 15 years. I don't have any fancy charts or graphs, more of a boots-on-the-ground. I've lived, breathed Tahoe City during those 20 years full-time. And when I say a boots-on-the-ground feel for what this town is desperately looking for with something like the Tahoe City Lodge project, which is in front of us today, is I used to work for a prominent ski shop in Tahoe City for 15 years, and at some point in time, every single person almost needs skis or snowboards. So, whether they're restaurateurs, homeowners, locals, tourists, you get to meet a lot of people. And both in that business and off, and what the general feel and commentary that has crept up over and over and over again has been that desire for a nicer, more high-end accommodations. There are plenty of single-family homes for rent, but there is the people that want the hotel experience, and right now, the Tahoe City Lodge, I feel, fills a void that is currently not being addressed and hasn't been addressed for over 40 years. So, I mean, I just sincerely hope that you guys are considering a yes vote on this, as I believe this project will bring one-time jobs, you know, year-round jobs, as well as the people that are going to frequent this establishment, they're the people that spend money, whether it's skiing, snowboarding, restaurants, clothes, et cetera. I feel that they are going to infuse a lot of dollars into our local economy that is currently passing us by, and I think Samir Tuma and his group has gone above and beyond and done a lot of homework to really, really put a lot of thought into this, and it isn't a build the building, make a bunch of money, and move out of town. I honestly believe that he is invested in this community, believes in this community, and is here for the long haul. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Ray Garland, and I'm the president of the Highland Homeowners Association. We represent 170 homeowners in that subdivision, and I've owned a home here in Tahoe City for 32 years. Wanted to just report that on September 3rd, we had our annual homeowners' meeting, and we reviewed the Tahoe City Lodge project in some detail. Everybody there and our board are enthusiastic about it without reservation. Nobody had any comments or concerns or worries about the details of the project. I just wanted you to know that as a homeowners' association, we thoroughly and enthusiastically endorse this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Planning Commission, this is Gary Davis. I'm a civil engineer in Tahoe City. I work with JK Architecture and Engineering. Thirty-year resident of Tahoe City, business owner, property owner in Tahoe City, and I've also been involved in a lot of community organizations. I'm the past president of the Tahoe City Downtown Association, early member of the Placer County Area Plan Team, and also a member of the Chamber of Commerce and other organizations. I'd like to say that this project and the area plan, but primarily this project, is a catalyst for survival in Tahoe City. Our community has been on a long-term down decline for the last 40 years, and with the restrictions we have with TRPA and the ability to do anything to our old infrastructure and these buildings that are absolutely falling apart, and all you can do is repaint them, the area plan allows this to happen. I support the Tahoe City Lodge from every angle. It's been a great collaboration with the TC PUD and the community. Mr. Tuma has reached out to all people in all manner at so many meetings to get collaboration and to get agreement on a fine project. I support the area plan for the height limits and density bonus that we get now with the area plan. It's essential in our core to have these types of things that allow development of some sort. I'd like to say that I hope you support the project as well. The benefits to the SEZ that have been talked about and BMPs are going to be substantial, and I believe we have a very fine project that will help us move forward, but we do have other issues still to deal with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary, and you also provided, I noticed in some of our stuff, a letter before you came here. Okay, thank you for that. Were able to read it ahead of time. Next, sir.
My name is Joe Alonzo. I've been a resident here for 43 years. I live in Tahoe City, been there for 37 years. I've been raising my nine children here, and I'm integrated into the school system, the business, I have businesses here, some of you might know. For me, this is an exciting project. For me, it's CPR for Tahoe City. I thought I was going to die before Tahoe City, but then it looked like Tahoe City was taking the lead and was going to die first. That was very sad. So, now that CPR is being in place, I'm very happy. I support the project in every element. I think environmentally, socially, and economically, we're on the right path. And in addition to that, I seem to see a lot of cooperativeness here, which we haven't seen anywhere else in our country, and that's a refreshing thing, too. Thank you, I support the project.
Thank you for that last comment especially. Thank you, Joe. Yeah, stay alive, right. All this death talk today.
All these locals.
I was feeling pretty good before that.
Locals before the Henrickson Building.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Good afternoon, my name is Carol Hester, and I'm a 30-year resident of Tahoe City and a small business owner for almost 20 years in downtown Tahoe City. I also am in full support of the Tahoe City Lodge project. It is exactly the right project at the right time with the right developer. Besides myself, I actually am representing a small group of business owners and community members that have gotten together in the recent weeks, talking about the project, and in our outreach, talking to other people. It's apparent there's a lot of support out there. So, we, the small group that just kind of informally named ourselves the Tahoe City Future Group, did put together a paper and online petition in order to show support for this project. Many working people cannot attend these meetings. As you see, this is a large chunk of time for us that work, and oftentimes, we do hear from the other folks that have a little more time to be here. So, in this last two weeks, we started this petition, and we have already gathered over 150 signatures of people who support the project. I'd actually, if it's okay, just read the text to you and then present this to your submission. It says, "Petition to vote yes for approval of both the Tahoe City Lodge final EIS/EI R and the project application, so the Tahoe City Lodge project can move forward with an approval as soon as possible." It's time now, not years down the road. And this is being sent to your commission, as well as the Board of Supervisors and the TRPA, and these numbers on the surveys will be going up. We just got 10 more last night online. Why we support the Tahoe City Lodge project? The Tahoe City Lodge project will mean significant positive impacts to the environment generally and to Lake Tahoe specifically. The Tahoe City Lodge project aligns with the vision of the community and brings numerous benefits to the Northlake Tahoe area. With the lodge, Tahoe City gains additional visitors without the additional traffic. More stays mean less day-trip traffic. More walkable, bikable, and mass transit connections means fewer cars. The Tahoe City Lodge will improve Tahoe City's economy and make our community more competitive. The lodge will also replace a blighted property at one of the key entrances to Northlake Tahoe, creating an aesthetically pleasing gateway in line with the community's character and benefiting the environment. We have restaurants, we have retail businesses, we have downtown recreational opportunities, but we need high-quality lodging. The lodge's developers, Keela Tahoe, have already shown their commitment to the community to creating partnerships and to working with local businesses. So, I submit this with over, well, 148 signatures.
Thank you. Give it to Sue there at the end there.
Good afternoon, my name is Roger Khan. My family has lived in this area for 56 years. When I came to Tahoe City in 1960, the property that the Tahoe City Lodge is located at was blighted. It hasn't changed in the entire 56 years I've lived here. This project is critically important for the revitalization of our community. It will, hopefully, first of all, it will be the first new lodging project in Tahoe City in over 50 years, probably 60 years. It might encourage some of the other lodging establishments to upgrade their facilities. It will also hopefully encourage other property owners in Tahoe City who have let their buildings and their properties fall apart over the course of the last generation or two, to go out and either fix their buildings or sell them, so it's a real opportunity for our community to grow and become vital once more. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Honorable Members of the Board, distinguished staff and legal counsel, my name is Greg Lean. I'm an attorney from Tahoe City, as you might be able to tell from my more formal speech there. I was thinking when I got up here, I'd be able to say, "Yeah, and I first moved here in '72," and I'd have the longest-running thing, but Roger just blew that away.
You didn't come close.
Not even close. Yeah, I first moved here as a ski bum in 1972, went away to law school, was a prosecutor for a while, and came back in 1980, and been practicing law in Tahoe City ever since. I want to tell you that this is a pivotal moment for us. It's a sea change, and it's really important for you to understand the depth of the work that remains to be done. This is a great start, but as you'll hear from other people, I think behind me, for example, Cindy Gufferson with TC PUD, you know, they were responsible for bringing $4.7 million worth of public money to the table to help this overall project work. Samir and his group putting a lot of money into this, a lot of time, as he said, hundreds and hundreds of hours, plus your staff has worked long and hard to do what we're all saying is going to be a catalyst for economic revitalization that we sorely need. I mean, the developers, as Larry and I remember back in the '70s, they were all chased out of here by CTRPA and TRPA, no offense to any, but, you know, that's the way it was. And I want to talk about, you know, we have all these widgets here at Lake Tahoe, you know, you've got TAUs, you've got bonus units, you've got this, you've got coverage, you've got density credits, all of these things that you need to juggle to make anything work. I represent the Rudnick family. They own the property immediately next door to the Tahoe City Lodge, and of course, immediately next to the golf course. So, they are ground zero for additional development. We really need work on those additional widgets being available, not in four years, now. Bonus units, I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, Tiffany, but I don't think we've had any private use of those bonus units ever since Gabby Barrett thought of them way back in the '70s, because the incentives were impractical. They just didn't make sense. We need to make sense out of them now. We need to make more TAUs available, make those bonus units truly usable for the purposes that were envisioned by loosening some things up, tweaking it, and seeing what we can do. We need economic incentives, and I know your staff has been working on this already, trying to get an economic incentive program together. I will stop at this point and not ask for additional time, because I could go on and on. So, I thank you for your consideration. I want to say just one more thing. We are working with Keela and their legal counsel, Greg Gatto- We are working with Keela and their legal counsel, Greg Gatto, to try to work out what's going to go on in the easement area, and I'll let my client speak about that.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Lyons, and I'm the Executive Director of the Tahoe City Downtown Association. I'm a resident and recent homeowner here in Tahoe City, and today I'll be speaking on behalf of TCDA Board of Directors, but I don't think I'll need the whole five minutes. The Tahoe City Downtown Association...
That's three minutes.
Five minutes if I'm speaking on behalf of the organization, right?
I didn't say that.
Now you're cutting into my time. The Tahoe City Downtown Association works tirelessly executing popular downtown Tahoe City events, continuing townwide beautification and community design, advocating and promoting Tahoe City, and continuing our vision to make Tahoe City become America's best mountain town to live, work, play, and visit. However fulfilling our vision hasn't always been easy, as you've heard over the past few comments before me. Over the years, many Tahoe City businesses have watched our amazing lakeside community decline due to growth of the local ski villages in Squaw, Norstar, and the town of Truckee. Our outdated area plan, due to our outdated area plan, growth redevelopment and an adequate high-end bed base has sorely been missing in Tahoe City. Over this long, five-year process, luckily, I haven't been a part of all of it. I've only lived here for two and a half years. But, and the Tahoe City Lodge planning project, many of the TCDA Board of Directors, members of the TCDA, have attended meetings, sat on committees, working groups, met with the developer on the Tahoe City Lodge project, all in an effort to create an updated community plan and an exciting project for our region and for Tahoe City. I want to thank Placer County, staff, TRPA staff, the partners, everyone throughout the North Lake Tahoe community for all of their hard work in creation of the Tahoe Basin Area Plan and the Tahoe City Lodge project. We appreciate that we were included in this planning process, and we believe our input has helped shape the current plan and project today, and we're ready to see it come to fruition. Yesterday, we had our monthly Board of Directors meeting, and TCDA does not have a policy on endorsing projects. However, we did discuss this project at length. We came up with some language about future project endorsement, and the Board of Directors unanimously voted to support the Tahoe City Lodge project in Tahoe City. And the Tahoe City Area Plan to move forward, creating sustainable redevelopment, job growth, and positive environmental rest restoration to our Tahoe City community. Let's not look backwards, let's move forward for an exciting future ahead. Please help Tahoe City truly fulfill our vision to become America's best mountain town. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. You did make it. See, I knew you could do that.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Cindy Gustafson, I'm General Manager of Tahoe City Public Utility District, and just in case you're wondering why a utility district is involved in all this redevelopment, we, in addition to handling water and sewer issues for about a third of the lake shore from Emerald Bay up to Dollar Hill, we also provide the most extensive network of bicycle trails and park and recreation facilities on the north shore. So in two thousand and eleven, the owners of the Tahoe City Golf Course, the largest singly, under single-ownership piece of land in downtown Tahoe City, put it on the market, and that was about the time the TRPA regional plan was coming forward. We understood, my Board of Directors understood, the value this property could add to the dynamics of these small commercial properties in downtown Tahoe City. And so we, as a group, as our Board of Directors, our staff, worked with the partner agencies to put together a consortium to acquire that golf course property for three purposes in general: recreation, to continue the great recreational opportunities that property provides our community, SEZ and environmental benefits, SEZ restoration, other environmental benefits, and third, and probably most critical to the regional plan of TRPA and now to this area plan, is economic revitalization of Tahoe City. Through this complicated formula we have in the basin, we can share those commodities through this process and help meet the environmental goals, recreation goals, and economic revitalization. We have a consortium with Placer County, the Airport District, and the Resort Association, along with the PUD, that constitute an oversight committee. Last week, that oversight committee met and found that this project, the Tahoe City Lodge project, is consistent with the goals for which we acquired the property, and I'll provide you with that statement. Each of the partners is adopting that statement and will provide it to you. And also, as you heard earlier, we did, our Board of Directors last June, did adopt the deed restrictions, and so did the Airport District, our partner, as well as the Resort Association. So the deed restriction on the remaining property stays in place to ensure recreation opportunities on the golf course. So thank you very much for your time today and appreciate all your support. Your staff has been tremendous. I want to echo what Shannon Eckmeyer said, between the League, Placer County staff, PUD staff, all of us working together, we've made this, I think, a great success. So thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Yeah, I'll provide that. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you again for coming. I'm sure this far into the process, the novelty of driving Kings Beach might have worn off. My name is Aaron Rudnick. I am the property owner adjacent to there. I own multiple parcels, commercial and residential, including buildings and businesses throughout Tahoe City. I still provide employee housing today to numerous employees, despite, I'm sure you are aware, we have had fifteen days of rafting in two years. We have always tried to be open and hardworking, and unfortunately, one of the drawbacks to this entire process is, you know, I'm spending forty hours a week now on this project and being here and trying to stay informed, and that's forty hours of good I cannot do for my community. Even Rotary, we only meet twice a month. Anyway, going through a bit of the easement, as he said, we have had issues with that. I have tried to make those clear as we've presented to you. We are still working in those, but those remain to be done. There is something that's come up in the conditional use permit that I want to make sure we get before you, and even in the last twenty minutes, we have already started trying to touch base with the county and council for the development. And that is on number sixty-three on there. There are several distance and requirements, as far as no equipment, debris within thirty-four feet of any off-site buildings, advance notice given to all buildings and structures within forty-three feet. There's a lot of things like this that, because we have seen project boundaries versus property boundaries versus a lot of things, I would like to cut a lot of that ambiguous things out and see if we can just include the Bechtel Building property, no matter what, as contingent upon those two things, make sure we remain informed, go through there. We don't want construction things staged in the easement, we want to be able to open that. The parking easement is one other thing that I would like to clarify. We did not want our parking places counted towards the grand number, especially as we were not ever approached about sharing this shared parking. Neither, though, did we want them taken away completely. I'm set to lose about a dozen parking places, which I'm sure we all know are extremely valuable, because I won't be able to park cars or repaint those lines once that part of my property becomes the entrance to the hotel. I have never been opposed to tearing down the Hendrickson Building, putting a nicer building, any of that. I'm going to need to fix some of my old buildings, and I'm sure we can guess one right now in the future, but it's not the what, it was the how. There were a lot of steps along here. This project is guided a lot by emotion. I just want to make sure that we do take our time and do the proper planning. Already, now, there is not any more than six T A U's that will be banked after the other ones are accrued through the economic incentive program for the ones applied for this. So as a person capable of development in this town, have the money in the property, and hopefully someday of the time, I'm a little worried that there won't be much left in the pot for the rest of us for the next five, ten years.
Thank you.
That's today. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Eric.
Good afternoon, Members of the Commission. My name is Carol White, and I live in Tahoe City at Tahoe Marina Lakefront. I spoke to this Commission in July about my concerns of a specific alignment drawn for the missing link between Commons Beach and Fannie Bridge or the Y. And as Crystal explained, changes have been made in the text and the map, removing the specific alignment and replacing it with a dotted line, which connects Fannie Bridge and Commons Beach, and explains that this dotted line means that any future alignment will look at all feasible options at the appropriate time. We now feel that we're on a level playing field and are really very grateful to the county for these modifications to the plan. You should have a letter from Tahoe Marina Lakefront in your package acknowledging the changes and thanking the county, particularly Crystal, and many other agencies that have had a voice in this decision, such as the Planning Services Department, Department of Public Works, the CEO Office, the county staff, and Tahoe City PUD, all of whom appeared to understand our concerns and agreed to these modifications. As a stakeholder in any future path in the area, we respectfully request that we be included in any future discussions, particularly as they directly affect our property on this portion of the path. And our remaining concern is that the county remain involved as a decision-maker in determining any future alignment that would require an easement through our property. So again, thank you very much, and we appreciate your addressing our problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Now, you are number eighteenth, you know, they only had seventeen sign up.
Well, somebody else must have stuck up.
Somebody, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Lee Conant, and I support the Tahoe City Lodge, and I also support the area plan. And I think the reasons, the fundamental reasons why I support them both were really expressed by Gary Davis and by Stacy, and these ideas and these sentiments that we're living in a town that has so much potential and yet has so much blight that we're talking about with the Keela Properties property, infrastructure improvements that are needed. All these improvements that are needed will make us into a world-class resort that we all want to be. I don't think that that's up for debate at all. And if projects like these are not adopted, and if the community doesn't step up and support it, then I don't see how the county would attract investment to come here and improve the roads that we have and improve the blighted properties that we're dealing with. And so I really feel like it's incumbent upon the community to do what basically everybody has done today and stand up and express our views that we support it, because if we do, then my understanding is that that will bring investment that is sorely needed here to fix the roads and redevelop areas that do not make us the world-class resort that we will be. So I support it. Thank you very much for having the forum, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lee.
I'm number nineteen, so I'm going to use his excuse.
Number twenty, number twenty lined up behind you, too. So you won't be last, evidently.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Scott Zumwalt, and I am the owner of the Bridgetender Tavern and Grill in Tahoe City for the last seven years, and recently started the West Shore Market and Deli in the Tahoe Park Sunnyside area. During peak seasons, I employ over a hundred people, and throughout the year, serve thousands of local and visiting customers. Through conversation with these customers, the overwhelming consensus as to why Tahoe City has not lived up to its full potential of being a great mountain town is the lack of lodging. On behalf of numerous business owners and many local residents and visitors, we fully support Samir and the Tahoe City Lodge. Thank you.
Thank you. Number twenty, number, gee, we've got another twenty more. How many more people want to speak here today, so we can at least make an ending to this? But go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Jordan Knighton, architect with JK Architecture Engineering. We have an office about one block at the Y, about one block from Tahoe City Lodge, and I'm here first of all to support the area plan. As an architect and planner, I've had the opportunity to review this for some time and with regards to ongoing projects that we have, and we're very excited and hopeful to see that go forward. Regarding Tahoe City Lodge, I observed this project for several years, and I'm very supportive of the process and the outcomes. I was going to say all the things that have been said about new energy and enriching experience and economic vitality and all those good buzzwords, and the catalyst for, certainly there for revitalization, but what I will tell you, one thing that I think is a little bit unique about me, I had the good pleasure over twenty years ago of being invited by the White House to help develop a series of guidelines and standards on community-based planning, and they became very foundational during the Clinton administration and have been broadcasted across the nation on how one should develop community resources and planning. And they're really good old-fashioned barn-raising techniques. They're nothing really new under the sun, that help make America great. And as I've watched this project, I thought that this project that Tahoe City Lodge, that Keela brought forward, has demonstrated those types of engagements. And the fact that really some of the best ideas don't come from owners and architects and planners, they come from listening to your community, and I think this project is a good example of that. As a local architect and planner who moved to Tahoe fifty years ago, I support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think you're absolutely correct, and listening, it applies to every facet of our lives, that's for sure, but especially when you listen to community members.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, Jennifer Kwasnik for Friends of the West Shore, as well as Tahoe Area Sierra Club. And first, I wanted to thank you for not breaking for lunch, so that people could stay here and have the opportunity to speak. I really appreciate that. And I also wanted to, again, acknowledge what I did yesterday at the TRPA committee meeting, but that the amount of staff time by both TRPA and county staff and consultants is impressive, and we really appreciate the time that's gone into this, and seeing a lot of the responses that we received in the final EIRS, with some things that we've asked before and didn't quite get answered, and so we were just really impressed and really appreciate the effort that went into that and some of the additional analysis that went into that. And so, just speaking to the area plan analysis today, one of the things that we are concerned about is that things that have more of a local impact have not been adequately analyzed, because the regional plan update looked at things from a regional perspective. All of these significance determinations, for example, for VMT are based on regional VMT, and we're concerned about the local impacts. And one thing that came out recently in TRPA's threshold evaluation report is that the vehicle trips in VMT for North Tahoe are basically in the Placer County portion have gone up, and that was just two thousand and thirteen and fourteen, whereas in South Shore and other places, they went down. So obviously, that's canceling out the impacts at a regional level, but what's going on within the Tahoe Basin Area Plan boundary, you know, we feel that needs to be looked at more, and that this is also an opportunity through the area plan to consider mitigation measures to start dealing with some of the impacts we're going to get. I mean, we just got, we had Amartus Valley approved, we have Squaw Valley approved, excuse me, so we have additional traffic coming in that, yes, is from areas outside of the basin, but this is an opportunity to look at some regional measures that we can do to help even more than what we're doing, because at the project level in the future, that's going to be really difficult. So with regards to the local VMT issues and then some of the other assessments, we just really think this would have been an opportunity to look at that at this level. But otherwise, thank you again for all the staff time and everyone who came out today and spoke, and have a good afternoon.
Thank you. Is anyone else in the audience? If not, Samir, would you like to come up and make some closing comments, if you care to?
Just two comments. One is a thank you to the community for people coming and showing their support. The community's just been an absolute pleasure to work with, and so I wanted to thank them. Placer County staff, TRPA staff, particularly the League to Save Lake Tahoe, have all just been wonderful to work with. It's a long, hard process, and this is coming at a time where there's been two very large other processes going through simultaneously, so everyone's overworked, overstretched, and I want to thank everybody for that time. And with that, I will take my mother's advice and quit when you're ahead.
Thank you.
Your mother?
Okay, Crystal. Crystal, did you have any final comments? A couple of people brought up some, a couple of items that, one was at number 63 in parking, and Steve brought up something about that sub-district, and Pat, I didn't write down what she brought up there. But there was two, there were two or three questions that were kind of, that staff maybe might want to address?
I could speak to the comment that was brought up by Pat Davidson with the Contractors Association. She had noted a request that any value, or a report of the secondary unit program, I think what she'd like to do, would like to see is that we do have to prepare a report. We have to prepare a report to the TRPA and also the state, the Housing and Community Development Department, for any units that are deed restricted. And so, I think what Pat would like to see is that that report perhaps be presented to your commission on an annual basis, just to kind of look and see how it's doing in addition to staff's request to provide a provision in the area plan itself for a four-year review of the program. I think what she'd like to see is kind of just an annual report.
Okay.
And then, the other, the question about the Tahoe City Lodge condition, I'm going to defer to Rebecca Tabor to answer that.
Rebecca? Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Rebecca Tabor, Engineering and Surveying, for the record. I have a suggestion, and it does pertain to Condition 63, and I'll read the suggestion from what I'm hearing, and then you can let me know if you think that's satisfactory. So, Condition 63 is a mitigation measure. Ordinarily, we keep the language the way it was written in the EIR, but we can improve the intent of the language, make it a little more clear. But I will defer to Karen on that as well. So, the thought is, on Condition 63, Letter B, which is in Paragraph 3, says, "Equipment, debris piles, and building materials shall not be staged or stored within 34 feet of any off-site buildings."
Okay.
And what I'm suggesting, from what I heard, was we add, I'm just going to read it the way I think.
Okay. I'm not going to write it down.
"Equipment, debris piles, and building materials shall not be staged or stored within the access easement or within 34 feet of any off-site buildings, comma, including the Bechtel Building." Does that?
Does that sound too legal?
And they're shaking their head, yes.
Okay. That sounds like they're, that's, they're in agreement?
I'm fine. I'm fine with the change.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
You probably should ask the applicant if the applicant is satisfied with that condition.
Samir, is there an issue with that, or?
No. Generally speaking, I'm fine with it. There was, you said the access easement. I want to make sure that we're referring to the access easement from the Bechtel property, because we do have another access easement that goes along the back of the golf course, and we do intend to use that area for staging, but certainly not within the Bechtel. So, as long as we're pinning that down, perfectly fine.
Can we call it the Bechtel access easement?
I'm fine with that.
Does that sound, okay. We'll do that.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other questions, Crystal, or that were brought up that you highlighted or that you marked down or anything?
Not that I saw. The only one I had noted was the comment from Pat Davidson.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
To go back to that comment by Pat, she had asked that that review take place, the motion yesterday was that it would take place every four years, I believe, and she was asking that the review take place more often than that. I think when we get to actually setting that standard, maybe at TRPA, my preference would be that we set some standards or goals for it, and if it falls out of those goals, then we redo it. Otherwise, it's business as usual. Otherwise, I don't want to see a lot of staff time wasted. If there's no problem, let's don't, let's don't fix it. I guess if that makes any sense.
Yeah. I'd just point out that, so, we are required by TRPA to provide an annual report. What staff was recommending was an additional provision in the area plan that would require us to look at those annual reports and then evaluate every four years whether or not we needed to make some adjustments to the program itself. So, I think what Pat would like to see is while, when we're preparing these annual reports that go before TRPA, that we provide a presentation to your commission on the annual, you know, evaluation on an annual basis of that program. I think that's what she was suggesting. But I will say that what staff is recommending in terms of the provision to the area plan, it would be every four years.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions from the Commissioners of Staff? No questions? Staff, do you have any final comments? Or go ahead.
Just one question.
Go ahead.
I brought up a piece of property that he was discussing that evidently found, fell outside the jurisdiction of the, what was the phrase we were using for not core transition areas? What's the process for having a property included in some future date that meets the standards that are core now?
Am I on? I'm on. So, yeah, that property, I actually have an exhibit in the back of the deck here if you'd like to see it. I could go to it or not.
Actually, I'm not even so interested in that particular property, but any property that may be outside of what we decided today. Let's say Tahoe has, you know, influx.
Right. Well, let me just, I'll point out that in 2014, the area plan that we had brought forward for consideration had a lot of land use changes outside of the Tahoe Basin. And the reason for those proposed land use changes was to really reconcile sites where we had legal non-conforming uses. And so, the site that was referenced today on Lake Forest Drive, I think it's 2850 Lake Forest Drive, that's a site on the corner of the highway and Lake Forest. It's immediately adjacent to a mixed-use district that is being proposed. And so, we had initially requested that that site be pulled into the mixed-use district. But again, at that time, in 2014, the area plan was met with some concern in terms of the overall scale of land use changes that we were proposing. And so, we really pulled back and focused our land use changes to the town centers. And so, at that time, the thought was, and it has been all along, is that we would come back at a later date with a later work program to look at these sites throughout the basin. There are a number of them, not just the sites along the river, but this site here and some others on the west shore, that we would take a look at those a little closer and make some proposed, propose some refinements to TRPA. So, that, we do intend to bring those forward at a later date. It's just not something that can be carried forward with this area plan.
Okay. So, is there a mechanism to cause that to be brought? Best of intentions?
Yeah. It would be a work program that would be prioritized through the Planning Services Division. And so, we prioritize our work on an annual basis, and so, this is something that'll be added to that list. I can't give you a specific time in terms of when we would bring that forward, because it all depends upon funding that's available to our division for these types of, you know, updates. But it is something that will be on that list.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I have a kind of a question, if I can.
What do you mean, kind of a question? It's either a question or it isn't.
Maybe it isn't going to be a question. It's a comment with a question mark at the end.
Okay.
As I look at the recommended conditions of approval, they don't seem to be the same as the ones that I see up on the calendar quite the same.
Yeah, that's a little more abbreviated.
But I don't have a copy of that in front of me to refer to, and I guess that's my question.
So, yeah, so, I would suggest if we're going to walk through the recommendations, we're going to take the recommendations one by one, and maybe we'll, I'll probably have Crystal walk you through that, and we'll go by page number in the staff report, and so you can follow along that way.
Okay. Are we ready for some action, Mr. Chairman? Sure. All right. Number one, as I read it, is to certify the final environmental impact report, SCH number 2014072039 pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act and adopt a mitigating monitoring program supported by and incorporated by the reference in this entirety, excuse me, in findings and facts and statement of overriding considerations and the following statements. Can I refer to them as the ones in the agenda, under item A and item B be included?
Yes. Yes. But on your motion, what you will be adding in here is your certification of the final EIR includes errata B.
Oh, the, right.
Yes. Errata B is modifying the text of the EIR with respect to mitigation measure 10-1C. And your recommendation of adopting the MMRP is also with errata A, which is the amendment to mitigation measure 10-1C.
And that's the motion? Motion, first motion.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second then.
Roll call.
Everybody gets their own last name.
That'll be nice.
Commissioner Arcuri.
Yes.
Commissioner Sevenson.
Yes.
Commissioner Gray.
Yes.
Commissioner Moss.
Yes.
Commissioner Nader.
Yes.
Commissioner Rokuchi.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Okay. I guess we'll move on to item two then, as in the agenda. Approve a vesting tentative map to create, oh, wait, I'm in the wrong one, sorry.
I would refer to page 21 at the top, item number two.
Adopt a resolution to approve the Tahoe Basin area plan, attachment C, including the errata Exhibit C of attachment C, supported by the findings set forth in the said resolution and the following findings. It's finding A and B as listed in the agenda and the errata sheets as.
Yeah. And I would add to that, including errata C provided to you today and including directing staff to modify the secondary unit program as discussed today.
Okay.
And I'd like to discuss that a little bit.
Okay.
I'd like to see the deed restrictions go away on the secondary units.
It may be a TRPA requirement. I'm not sure.
It's not.
Huh?
She's saying no. It's not.
It's, yeah, that.
Do you want to answer?
Is there a second to wait to the motion? Is there a second, then we'll take a discussion? Was there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. That discussion now, go ahead.
Like I say, I just, I, they're going to get built, they're not going to get built with deed restrictions on them. I'd like to see it go away.
Maybe Staff can answer.
I would just point out that it's not required by TRPA. It was a modification in response to a lot of comment that we got on the draft environmental document, and so, we made that change to really, you know, as a way to, A, respond to comments, and B, just, I think it was widely supported. So, it was something that was, you know, supported by TRPA and certainly supported by Placer staff as well as other stakeholders in the basin.
Would you rather just vote your conscience then?
Certainly. Like I say.
Any further comments? If not, roll call.
Mr. Arcuri.
We didn't do anything, right? We still have the original.
Well, you have the original motion.
Right. I mean, that was just a suggestion, but that didn't seem to go anywhere.
Commissioner Sevenson.
Your turn.
Yes.
Commissioner Gray.
Yes.
Commissioner Moss.
No.
Commissioner Nader.
Yes.
Commissioner Rokuchi.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Number three. Adopt an ordinance to approve the Tahoe Basin area plan implementing regulations and amend Placer County Code, Chapter 17, Article 17.02, 17.56, and dependencies B, C, D, and F. Attachment D, supported by findings in said ordinance and incorporating the findings set forth in Section 2. And also, item four, adopt an ordinance to rezone properties within the Tahoe Basin area plan E, supported by findings set forth in said ordinances. What other things do you need?
No changes to that one. I think you're good.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved in second, roll call.
Commissioner Arcuri.
Yes.
Commissioner Sevenson.
Yes.
Commissioner Gray.
Yes.
Commissioner Moss.
Yes.
Commissioner Nader.
Yes.
And Chairman Rokuchi.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess that takes us on then to the.
Excuse me. Go ahead.
Right. Just to clarify the record, your last motion was taking, was taking items three and four at both ordinances for the rezones together. I just want to make sure that was clear on the record.
Yes.
Thank you.
And unless there's other things we have to talk about, I'm going to make a motion then on the, on the lodge. And since we have a recommendation from the audience and the Development Review Committee, I'm going to move that we certify the final environmental impact report, SCH number 2014072039, and item A and B as listed below.
Yeah. Could you change that?
And just to clarify, that is including the errata A and the errata B, amending both the text of the EIR and the mitigation monitoring reporting program with respect to mitigation measure 10-1C.
Thank you.
Was there a second motion?
Second.
Okay.
Two seconds. Let's see. Mr. Arcuri, seconded. Okay, roll call. I think more than Mr. Arcuri, but we'll give him the credit.
You got my name now?
Yeah.
All right. Commissioner Arcuri.
Yes.
Commissioner Sevenson.
Yes.
Commissioner Gray.
Yes.
Commissioner Moss.
Yes.
Commissioner Nader.
Yes.
And Chairman Rokuchi.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number two. Approve a vesting tentative map to create one lot to allow for a condo plan with its sub-A, B, C, and D as listed in the agenda.
Yes. And just to clarify, all these motions are recommendations to the board.
To the Board of Supervisors.
Right.
We know that.
And that would be your A through D are basically your findings supporting your recommendation.
Second.
Moved in second, and Mr. Moss, second. Oops. Roll call.
Okay. We'll do this again. Commissioner Arcuri.
Yes.
Commissioner Sevenson.
Yes.
Commissioner Gray.
Yes.
Commissioner Moss.
Yes.
Commissioner Nader.
Yes.
And Chairman Rokuchi.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. We'll try number three. Approve a conditional use permit to allow for 118-unit hotel project with the conditions as listed, A, B, C, and D in the agenda. Is there other additives?
Those would be findings. We're going to take one last recommendation at the very end to deal with the conditions of approval. So, this would be subject to the findings that you've just listed.
Okay.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Moss. Roll call.
Commissioner Arcuri.
Yes.
Commissioner Sevenson.
Yes.
Commissioner Gray.
Yes.
Commissioner Nader.
Yes.
And Chairman Rokuchi.
Yes.
Thank you.
Number four is to approve a variance to Section 17.54.070.8.2.0D of the zoning ordinance to remove the requirement that a plan or island be located every 10 parking spaces within the parking areas. And then, it has the conditions for that, one, I'm sorry, A through E in the agenda.
Those would be the findings.
Those are the findings.
Second.
And this is a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors also.
It's been moved in second, and Mr. Moss. Roll call.
Commissioner Arcuri.
Yes.
Commissioner Sevenson.
Yes.
Commissioner Gray.
Yes.
Commissioner Moss.
Yes.
Commissioner Nader.
Yes.
And Chairman Rokuchi.
Yes.
Thank you.
I guess item five. I guess item five, approve an exception to chapter three, section three point oh-seven, parking and access standards for the implementing regulations of the Placer County Tahoe Basin area plan to allow an increase in the maximum number of compact parking spaces permissible from twenty percent, twenty-six parking spaces to thirty-eight percent, forty-nine parking spaces, where a total of one-hundred-and-thirty-two spaces would be provided.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Moss, roll call.
Commissioner Arcuri.
Yes.
Commissioner Sevenson.
Yes.
Commissioner Gray.
Yes.
Commissioner Moss.
Yes.
Now, what I'd like you to do is, oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. We're almost there. Commissioner Nader.
Yes.
And Chairman Rokuchi.
Yes.
Thank you.
And now Karen, which.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Would like you to take one more action, a recommendation to that, to state that items two through five, the Commissioners' recommendations on two through five are subject to the conditions of approval set forth in attachment D of the staff report as amended pursuant to the errata to amend condition number forty-four and fifty-nine and to also amend condition number sixty-three as read into the record today.
So moved, second. It's been moved by Mr. Moss, second, Mr. Sevenson. It's been moved by Mr. Moss, and they reverse roles.
Had to give Larry a break.
Roll call. Roll call.
All right, Commissioner Arcuri.
Yes.
Commissioner Sevenson.
Yes.
Commissioner Gray.
Yes.
Commissioner Moss.
Yes.
Commissioner Nader.
Yeah.
And Chairman Rokuchi.
Yes.
Thank you.
I had this guy almost interrupted me. He had, he had my sleeve here. He said he wanted to make a comment, so.
I want to thank the audience. Pretty neat to have a hearing on an item at Tahoe and now to have five hundred people in the room with signs. It's a very, very orderly, polite, nice group of people. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I want to also second that. I, I think this is a, I think, first of all, I think staff needed this and I think the Commission needed this meeting. But I also, there's a word that I don't use very often because I think it's overused, and that's the word collaboration. I think it's overused, but I think this is a perfect example where we can use that word. And I'm glad the people that did bring up still some of the concerns that, and staff addressed, you know, because it's, it's an ongoing process. It's not finished here. And maybe, maybe for this project, it is, or it isn't there. They still have to do a lot of stuff before they can build it. But I want to thank the audience for being courteous. Does anybody else have any comments here? If, if, if not, the meeting is adjourned.
One, one point for the record, just to remind the audience that all actions taken were recommendations to the board. There are no appeals. This will be scheduled for the board for consideration.
Yeah, they're gonna go automatic there anyway. Okay, thank you for all for coming and participating. The meeting is adjourned.